O'Halloran?
Yes.
Stride?
Yes.
Hayes?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
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 Kalala?
Here.
Here.
Okay, we're going to do our Pledge of Allegiance, so if everyone please stand. And if I could ask our student board members to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so to start off, we have a few resolutions. Our first resolution is McKenna McGlorini. All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This resolution is for the accomplishment of Lockport Township High School senior student McKenna McGlorini. Whereas Lockport Township High School student McKenna McGlorini earned the state champion title class 3A pole vault in the IHSA State Track and Field Championship finals on May 23rd and May 24th, 2025 at Eastern Illinois University in Charleston, Illinois. And whereas coaches Joe Crabbe and Rob Schultz have aided and guided McKenna McGlorini in her success as a Lockport Township High School District 205 student and athlete. And whereas McKenna McGlorini has brought honor and distinction to herself, family, school, and community by achieving this respected status, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on this 16th day of June, 16th day of June 2025. McKenna, please come on up.
Yeah, come on up. Jeanette, you are there. Yeah, President Shaw just is, you know, it didn't happen if there's not a picture, right? It's not on social media. But everyone in the audience, I just want to share with the board and then also, you know, sharing, you know, earlier with McKenna's family, this is one of the most difficult, difficult of the field sports in IHSA. That's just all there is to it. If you ever see a pole vaulter, you'll know how difficult it is. Illinois is an extremely competitive state in track and field. If you ever want to have a thrill, go down to either the boys or the girls meet. So first ever Lockport student to earn a state championship in pole vault. And what I would say, I know maybe Shotput or Discus or others might have a different opinion, I think it's absolutely the toughest field sport out there. And it's been fun watching McKenna slowly. And I personally thought you'd be a state champion when I saw you do your sectional qualification. I had not seen a young woman, you know, get that kind of height in a long, long time. So hats off to you as an incredible athlete. So, yeah.
Next up, we have boys track. Absolutely. So this resolution is here to recognize the accomplishments of the Lockport Township High School Boys Track students. For first place in the 800 meter, it's Nolan Lamoreau. And for second place in the 4x400, it is Fopa Falua Amasori, Xavier Adenai, and Michael Nicholson. Whereas Lockport Township High School Boys Track student competed in the all-state competition on May 31st, 2025 at Eastern Illinois University in Charleston, Illinois. And whereas coaches Tom Razzo, Ryan Gold, Pete Kishline, Ray Pustnik, Jeff Connet, Michael White, Casey Quintana, and Derek Freiberg have aided and guided the boys track team in their success as Lockport Township High School District 205 students and athletes. And whereas Nolan Lamoreau, Fopa Falua Amasori, Xavier Adenai, and Michael Nicholson have brought honor and distinction to themselves, family, school, and community by achieving this respected status, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution was adopted on the 16th day of June 2025. Congratulations.
Yeah. Yeah, you guys got to do a little stand-up, yeah. And President Shaw, I have to comment on these gentlemen, too. Everybody should know that in the track events, but especially in the men's side, the absolute marquee race is the 800. And the reason why is because it's a long-distance sprint. And anybody who's ever run a track 800 will know how competitive and how hard that is. So certainly Nolan, incredible to get that state championship. And then also, just to lose a relay, the relay is as prestigious. You know, just to be right there, it's one of the most exciting things you can, you can see is the relay standing before you. So pretty, pretty amazing, pretty incredible. Thanks to all the parents here tonight for supporting, you know, your athletes. We're really proud of this incredible accomplishment. Yeah.
Congratulations to all of our track athletes that are here tonight. I've had the privilege of taking a podium downstate in my career. And let me just say, like, for you to perform at that level is just so impressive. And thank you for, thank you to the coaches, thank you to the parents, and everyone that's here to support them. So do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
Certainly.
All right, it's been motioned by Ann Caneva.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Hayes. Roll call.
Stride?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes. Okay. All right, next we have board salutes.
I'll go and just make mention, I just want to say, as both a board member, a community member, and a proud parent of a graduating senior, I thought graduation was just really fun. I thought it was well done. I thought it seemed like the students had a good time. And I just want to say thanks to Matt Bartley and Jatam Matla for all the work that they did to get that going. And it's, it's an accomplishment. It's a lot of moving parts. So, and what an honor it was to be able to participate. I really, really enjoyed being up on the stage and being able to shake all the students' hands. It was, it was a nice, it was a nice event, in my opinion. So, thanks all.
And I think adding on to graduation, also our graduation speaker, Mia Fontanetta, she did a wonderful job today, so.
Okay, my board salute is for our outgoing student board members. I just want to be deeply grateful for all you did for us, you know, your feedback from your peers that really made us, helped us making those decisions. But thank you so much, and I wish you the best on going, for your next journey. Thank you.
Yeah, nice. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Razzo?
I know they are not Lockport employees, but the Lockport Women's Club, I know you're a member. I happened to stop by Canal Days and visited our artisan market again, spent more money. But it was, it was just wonderful. And they were just so proud to say that all of the students at the CCC made all of the items that were available for purchase. So looking forward to seeing what else they make.
I would like to piggyback off of the commencement ceremony sentiments. From the student perspective, it truly was just such a lovely ceremony. I felt so loved and celebrated from the photo ops outside of the school to just how well organized it was. And I wanted to extend my special thanks to all the teachers that donated there Saturday to be there to help us, all of that behind-the-scenes work.
Okay, I just really wanted to salute my time here at Lockport. From all the wonderful opportunities I've had, wrestling, Skills USA, Orcasis, being a student board member here, every class I've taken and every teacher I've had has grown me in ways I can't even begin to describe. And it's truly, like, can't describe how impactful my time here has been. And it's just a wonderful school, and I just can't wait to see what next generations of students do and how much our school has grown, even in my time here, like getting girls wrestling, or just in every way, it's continuing to grow. And I'm excited to see that. And then I also wanted to salute our new incoming board, student board members. I'm excited to see all the ways they support their student body and just represent them in wonderful ways. Thank you.
And I think I would be remiss if I didn't salute our coaches of our baseball and our softball programs. They did a fantastic job this season. And to make it, I mean, two grueling end-of-season playoff games, it's really hard to advance in those two sports. And just to see them go as far as they did, I'm just super proud to, you know, be part of all of that. All right.
We like to remind people that if we had resolutions, don't, don't feel like you have to stick around. We have a very lively board meeting coming up. But if you're feeling like, you know, the whole purpose of doing this is twofold. One, you know, there is history being written, because this is a public meeting. And there are many times when we go back into the annals of history to read what happened in this, you know, 116-year-old Township High School district. So you're literally written into the high, into the history of the district, right? That's part of why we're doing that. And then the second reason why we're doing it, even if it's brief, is just, you know, great accomplishments deserve public acknowledgement. It's very important for communities to say to their youth, we're proud of you. We're amazed by you. We see you. We know you had this incredible effort. And probably none of us, for all of these athletes, were the people that were mentioned here. We don't really know the sacrifices you made, or the hours that you put in, or the things that you didn't do, that you could have done, because you were training, you were lifting, you were practicing. But we're pretty sure that you don't get to the elite level by not making those sacrifices, right? And so we're just here taking a really quick stop in your time, our time, to honor that, to acknowledge that, to know that even more than the, you know, hardware that you came back from Eastern Illinois University with, it's the effort. The effort is the prize. And we're really here to say that we're incredibly proud of you for the effort and the Olympic spirit that all of you have, of you stretch yourself further than you thought you could go, and you went, right? So congratulations, but don't be shy about it. You're saying it's time to go, like, you know, get something to eat or do some fun thing. We, we support you, all right? We won't think less of you, okay? So congratulations, everyone.
Okay, up next, I'm going to open the public hearing for the approval of the amended budget for fiscal year 2425. A hearing is being held to provide members of the public with the opportunity to address the board about proposed, about the proposed amended budget for fiscal year 2024 through 2025. Those wishing to speak during the hearing will be asked to sign up in accordance with the board's public participation procedures. The meeting is, or the hearing is opened at 7:14. We do not have anybody on the docket to speak. Closing it out. All right, the hearing will be closed at 7:14. All right, up next, we have our student board member report.
So for our report this evening, and we're going to include Michael and Wazira on this, we really just wanted to extend our thanks to the board for creating this position and then allowing the four of us to serve in these roles for a year. It's funny, tonight at dinner with my family, I was discussing all the ways that this experience has just been so truly valuable for me, and, and just so many ways that I couldn't ever have imagined. One, I think, just being a citizen the rest of my life, seeing the way that a school district, a town runs, it makes you appreciate all of those fine things, to the budget, to staffing, just how robust a school district truly is. I learned so much about professionalism and how to be an effective I learned so much about professionalism and how to be an effective and productive member of a board in collaboration and discussion. And that truly is something that I don't think many people our age have. But carrying into my future journey, truly, I think that I'll look back and use these skills for many, many years. I appreciate the commitment to student voice that the district and the board has. I think it's so important as we're the ones walking these halls every day. I just love that we recognize that and I thank you for every morning, every meeting, the time that you gave to listen to us and our ideas and our opinions and how we felt, the students felt in in the school.
Okay, so this experience has been absolutely amazing, just being able to sit on the board and have a voice here. And as Mia was saying, we do a wonderful job here at Lockport, making sure the student voices are heard. And I greatly appreciate that and I'm sure every student here does. It's just, it's something you don't necessarily expect from a high school, especially this big of a high school. But yet we do it and that's just so amazing to see. So I thank you all for your support, every board member before you that was a part of this decision. And I'm so thankful that you guys get to continue this and make an impact on students' lives as you have mine and just provide that support system for them to have a voice here and give them this amazing opportunity. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the board members and everyone who was in the decision process to include student board members in this opportunity that I got. I was able to meet new students and I was also able to meet new adult community members. And it's just helped me learn how to be a really impactful member of my community. And I'll definitely carry that into college. And I want to say congratulations to the new student board members as well. And I'm happy I had the opportunity to meet them and talk with them in our superintendent advisory council. And I know that they have amazing ideas that they're going to bring. And yeah, thank you.
I cannot underestimate not only how amazing of an experience it was for me my senior year to be on the board, working with all of you, especially for the curriculum committee, which was my position. But just also, it was a fun experience. I think the right word here is just fun and all of us could agree. We don't, we don't need to use all sorts of crazy words here. It's just fun. Every time that I would go into a meeting, whether it's the superintendent advisory council, whether it's a curriculum meeting, I would always be looking forward to it. I'd be looking forward to hearing what other people have to say, looking forward to give my own voice, looking forward to what students have to say. And I really think that next year, I'm proud to see that Lockport's finest are going to be serving as the board members for next year. I think you guys are going to have a really great year, both the board itself and the students. Couldn't be happier. Thank you.
You have to tell us, you know, what's in store, you know, not everybody in the room might know. Maybe if we start with you, Wazira, what's in store for you next year? What's what's your next step?
Next year, I'm going to be double majoring in economics and French and UIC.
All right, UIC. Michael?
So I'm going to be doing engineering at Cornell.
I'll be doing aeronautical engineering at Purdue University. And I'll be studying biochemistry at Notre Dame.
Congratulations to all of you.
Good stuff. You know, we really want to thank you. You know, I think many of my colleagues behind me, we've had an opportunity to work with each one of you. I hope you feel like we actually dug in like colleagues and tried to problem solve. You know, I hope we never felt like we patronized you like, you know, mere teenagers. We made a seat at the table for you because your your voice does matter, right? You're you are the users of the school and we can learn a tremendous amount from, you know, your experience. Even sometimes when we disagreed, right? When it was, there was a disagreement and you thought we should go in a in a different direction. One thing I would do, I'm just going to, you know, we're teachers, so we have to give you homework, right? And I'm not joking on this. You know, you've all said great things about your experience, but please, 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 as soon as you can, jot down the the things that you feel you you in a concrete way contributed to an accomplishment, right? You know, the seat of a bell schedule, more bilingual teachers, more school counselors and social workers, right? You all contributed to a really unique over the next two years, school calendar that really didn't exist before, right? And the reason why that matters is inevitably you're all going places. You will sit down at some student activities interview where you'll see some engineering leadership group or economic group. You'll want to apply for that grant or something like that. And someone across the table will ask you, will tell me a time that you've been in a leadership position and what did you accomplish? And it's just good to really remember that because you're going to get shot out and so many things are going to happen when you're going to Cornell and Purdue and UIC and Notre Dame. Sometimes you forget, right? People ask me, what have you accomplished? And sometimes I just, I've been working so hard, I just can't remember, right? So thank goodness I keep track of those things. But you've been tremendous, tremendous board members and you've helped me with student advisory council get quite a bit done through through you. So, congrats.
So I think Ms. Johnson had our student board members do this last year and I kind of liked it. Do you have any words of advice for us moving forward with our new student board? That you'd like us to know about your experience, something that we should keep doing, anything we should stop doing?
Anyone with advice for the future board members?
I didn't mean to catch you off guard.
I would say continue triple I, like continue the students going to triple I. I think that that was a really great opportunity just to learn like that it's bigger than yourself, I guess. Like it's bigger than just one school district. You get to meet with so many other people from all over Illinois. And it's just, that's a great opportunity. Trying to think of other ones. No, no.
You know, I I feel like a lot of you may think this is a given, but to us students, I I don't think it is. Just treating us as equals in the decision-making process and really valuing our opinion was, you know, something that I think this board did really well. And I know that you are going to continue with it. I don't think that's even, you know, an option, to be honest. I know that you guys are all going to regardless, but I think it's good to highlight that you guys have done such a good job with it because I don't think that every district that has student board members actually cares about their opinion like this district does.
I would love to piggyback of, piggyback off what Michael said about treating us as equals. I think it was really the little things for me of having us our name called during roll call at the beginning of the meeting or giving us a name tag, giving us a board binder, things that maybe aren't necessarily completely necessary because we don't have any voting power. But those small things like that just really show us how much that we are, we do matter and we are here and we have a seat at the table and you see us as equals on this board.
I think another amazing thing that the board did was our meetings during the summer and like how Mia said, our binder and the packets we got. I know someone who was like on a committee that like the packets I got that were specific on what the finance committee was going to go over, like the budget and the tax levy, really helped me like understand before I went into my first meeting. And I think also us meeting and going to the August meeting as four board members and staying the whole time and being able to see how like a board meeting is formatted also helped.
You know, I would also add for the committees, I met with a lot of the people in my committee, well, just like in terms of discussion. Even like before the first meeting, I talked to, I talked to the, yeah, I I talked to various members of the board in terms of what should be happening. Well, not what should be happening, but what is going on with regards to curriculum? Almost like what should I be looking at in the future for my curriculum meetings? And I feel like that was very useful for me going forward because it kind of put a focus on how I should be thinking for the next meetings. I don't know if necessarily Wazira did that too, but or if it was even, you know, a requirement or a suggestion. But I really liked it and I think that it would be a good idea for next year's student board members to do that as well.
Sitting on the curriculum committee issue, I think we enjoyed your input because you came to us with a student perspective. You know, all we can see is either the board perspective or the educator's perspective. So you you added a new sense of making it real to us, okay? Because you guys are the ones that had to live it, you know, day in and day out. And the questions, insightful questions that you asked were excellent, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
And it gives us great pleasure. We've got some, you know, in this meeting, we just introduced, you know, we know you've seen them because you interviewed them. And a lot of thanks to the school board because guess what? One of the suggestions that was made by the first ever student board members was to appoint students at the beginning of the summer, not at the end of the summer, so that actually all of you can have some time together and I can have some time with the new student board members. And we took that to heart, but what that means for the board members is that they had four meetings in May. That's a lot of meetings, right? But I'm just so proud that they put in that shoulder work. So just, you know, our new board members, you guys will be sworn in officially on August 18th. So you can get a sense of the rhythm. Ryan Gleason, he works, he volunteers at a summer camp for students. He's a counselor there, so he is off in the wilds of Wisconsin doing that. But if you could just stand when you hear your name held, read, excuse me. James Wyatt, James is going to be sitting with you on your monthly, along with Ryan, sitting with you on your monthly board meetings. His probably marquee accomplishment was the next two-year school calendar. So let's give James a big round of applause. Evelyn Sadarchek, sorry Evelyn, she is going to be sitting on the curriculum committee and I really have to compliment Evelyn. She was a great member of student advisory council. But the board might remember that she interviewed last year. And not everybody who interviews last year and gets rejected comes back to interview again, right? But you came back very confidently, ready, you were confident and you were poised and I think that really came through. So she will be joining, taking Michael's place on the curriculum committee. So Evelyn, congratulations. And then Abby Carroll, Abby will be working with Mrs. Croy. And Abby's been an outstanding member of the superintendent advisory council this year. You obviously interviewed well. I went back, I looked at your attendance, you had outstanding superintendent advisory council attendance, but. And Abby is going to be working next year on finance and facility committee and it's going to be a very, very busy year. So congratulations to you, Abby. And as we do with resolutions, if you really want to dive into the board meeting and see it, absolutely stay. But if you if you tip out, you won't hurt our feelings, okay? We just wanted to introduce you and we're going to do a press release tomorrow that you four were appointed. And that goes for Michael and Wazira. We'd love for you to stay, but we understand, you know, you might have other things going on. You've already found, really thanks to Mrs. Maxwell, I really appreciate her. She's been critical in communicating with all of you. You've probably gotten texts from her and could you please give her a big round of applause? Very hard work. She was very assistive in in some things that you can take with you. Just some presents from the Board of Education that say thank you to each one of you and things that we hope end up in your dorm room or on a shelf, that when you look at it, you you remember, you know, your time here, Avery, all right? Don't forget about us, we won't forget about you. And I do have to give a shout out just to Mrs. Lopez Keneva. This really was, this really was her vision, you know? She made the thing, she went to triple I, she saw a presentation and in her Mrs. Lopez Keneva way said, I think we can do a better job. And that that remains yet to be seen, you know? But congratulations.
All right, so up next, no AFT report tonight, correct?
Right, no AFT.
Okay, ISB report, Ms. Johnson?
I don't have one. Was I doing?
Okay.
Probably, probably the only thing on that, President Shaw, is, you know, June 2nd, Kathy manned the computer and the difficulty of making reservations for triple. It's 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 like Beyonce and Taylor Swift tickets, okay? Who knew so many people wanted to go to a state conference? So great job and got us all set up.
All right, foundation report. It's in your board agenda. Any questions? Looks like we have community movie nights. The golf outing was a success.
Yeah, wicked on Wednesday night.
Mother Nature needs to agree.
Okay. And I would say just here, you know, it was Angela did very modest, but did a great job with our golf outing. Smooth, fun, enjoyable, great fundraiser, people were pleased, easy to access. It was a delight, it was a pleasurable event. And, you know, one of my favorite things, all the students who have earned a foundation scholarship who come, work the event in their college, T-shirts, it was it was really neat, it was amazing. Hey, I'll be in touch with you guys for sure. So congratulations to her.
All right, then we have Taste of Lockport coming up and then the next foundation meeting, which is on June 17th.
And if there's any board members, you know, we just to remind you, time and place of that, it's nice if you want to find out a little bit what the foundation does. You know, it's a great meeting to just, it's more of a social meeting, end of the year meeting. It's a great meeting for you just to drop in and you're more than welcome, right?
All right, our legislative report.
Oh, the legislative report. Springfield was 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 happening. There's universal agreement among superintendents. We have not really received and 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 like high school district, Illinois High School District Organization, who lobbies on our behalf and represents high school issues down in Springfield, they have not come out with what is called a clean bill. And basically what that is, is, you know, usually on the very last day, May 31st, the budget is passed. There's all sorts of trimming and shaping and shifting of bills and then we get what's called a clean bill. You know, this is what it means, right? And that has not come out yet, but there were a few that I really wanted to sink my teeth into. In your binder, you have a sheet, it's multicolored, it's kind of on the opening, right when you open up. It's got a number of organizations. This was something that we at the high school level, we are, we are trying across the state of Illinois to come to an agreement and we really did with the dual credit bill, that there are some standard issues with dual credit. The organization where this negotiation started for this bill is the organization that represents community colleges in Illinois, really wanted the legislator to give each community college its own authority to determine classes, structures, qualifications of instructors to earn a a junior college credit in the state of Illinois. We as administrators found that problematic because it would allow different community colleges. College DuPage could make it very easy to earn a dual credit. JJC could make it very difficult. And what would that mean for our students who are bound in attendance area? And we all realized this and really sat at the negotiation table. Also, could community colleges create situations for you where the education level of a teacher to teach dual credit would be so high that you'd be hiring incredibly expensive employees? And we really fought hard to make it less restrictive, more clear, more uniform. And really, we believe that's that fact sheet does that. It creates a statewide agreement. We also believe that if the law is that if you earn and do a junior college credit in the state of Illinois, if it goes to any public university, then there should be some uniformity there, right? And so I think that's major. Bombshell. The cell phone legislation did not pass. It did not pass. That's a bombshell. That's what I didn't see coming. But in essence, what I wrote was my recommendation to you, you know, we've worked hard with superintendent advisory council, we've worked hard with our union, you already have board policy that that restricts cell phone use to the classroom under the guidance of a teacher. So I think there's two routes that you can go, but I'll tell you the practice route that we're thinking after all that work this year. You you could go with your existing policy and most of that resides in Mr. Dusterhoff's bailiwick under technology. You could craft, you know, ask us to craft a standalone cell phone personal use policy that we roll through our policy development. At any rate, we are planning really, there's, you know, enforcement would be the strong word, but really trying to get everybody at the beginning of the school year on board with the idea that I think the students would agree, have agreed, the union would agree, the administration would agree, that we all probably need better etiquette with our personal devices. We've made the porter pockets, you walk in, you know, We've made the Porter pockets, you walk in, you know, you drop off your cellphone at the front of the classroom in your designated slot. That was per teacher request, wasn't required. We're going to have that in every classroom at Central and at East, and that's going to be a requirement, that you separate yourself from your cellphone, because surely there can be 50 minutes when you can just be under the tutelage of your teacher. And we've supplied all of the technology you need through a Chromebook to do what you need to do in the classroom, right? But also, that's going to take consistency from classroom to classroom, that's going to take consistency in the hallways. That's going to take approaching it like we approach tardiness and we approach attendance. We don't, on the first violation of that, send you to the dean. That would be untenable for our deans, just the volume of our two buildings. So we want to work towards that. But I think what it's going to take is every single person at a steady drumbeat committing to the idea that, hey, we can step away from our personal devices. And that's attendant not only to the focus you need in classrooms, but all of the research that's coming out. If, I'm a fan of the book Anxiety Nation. And Anxiety Nation, a lot of people believe that the research is that these things have caused anxiety mainly with our youth. But there's also a good amount of research how that's caused quite a bit of anxiety with us as adults, right? And just maybe setting the thing aside is a good practice for all of us. So I was surprised. But I think we have a wind in our sails, students, is that, does that represent the tenor of what we've talked about? When we asked you to partner with our union leaders, did I represent accurately the conversation?
How does that work with PE class?
Well, PE classes, most students, we're going to have to find, you know, many students stow it in their locker, some keep it on their person, so we're going to have to find a similar Porter pockets way in gyms and in spaces, right? The concern I have about that, Mrs. Johnson, obviously, is security, right? Some classes go outside for a walk, you know, so we would just have to have proper supervision of PE areas so nobody feels like they put their phone there and then it went walking, right? But interesting enough, given the nature, we don't see a lot of students with their cellphones out in physical education. It's the nature of it, so. There are also union and labor negotiations. I put this in here, this really does not impact us, I think Dr. Green would agree. There was a hotly contested bill to allow school districts outside of collective bargaining to hire on a temporary basis third-party contractors, right? And, you know, these are things like different short-term, non-instructional. There are many places where bus drivers are part of the Teamsters, part of the collective bargaining agreement. So ultimately, this did pass, but what it created is it created limits on districts being able to do that. Being able to say, we're going to just create a lane, we're going to hire these temporary employees, it's not going to be part of the collective bargaining agreement. Reason why I bring that up is we just don't really do that. I think we have such a good relationship with our collective bargaining agreement, and when we hire, we're very attractive in terms of hiring. We're not in a situation where we're so desperate for certain support positions that we would have to do something like this. But I thought it was worth noticing. All the others are bills that we just haven't gotten the clean bill on yet. You know, these were the ones that I think were the most notable, that we know passed and we know their dimensions. So look for more to come. Any questions I can answer?
I have a quick question just about the cellphone policy that you discussed. And I know that the student board members have worked in the area of updates on those. It's nice to know that that is a focus of the students as well. Do you, has there been a brief overview of what that cellphone policy would look like at this point? Or any construction of it at all?
Well, we would need direction from you, Michaeline, in terms of if you want a standalone policy. So your policy right now, if you look in your policy, is reflective, you know, of the, most of the policies that you would see in high schools, where in essence, really the only acceptable use of personal technology is in a classroom, under the direction or guidance of a teacher, or in a designated lunch, you know, cafeteria area, right? Students are not supposed to be on their cellphones, ear pods, talking on their Apple Watch in the hallways. They shouldn't have it out in a classroom. And so that's really more practice, right? Where the practice is, we're going to work very hard to get uniformity across the board, that we're going to have a more consistent enforcement. Now, if you directed us and said, you know what, this is such an emphasis for us, we want a specific policy that memorializes that, crystallizes that, pulls a couple pieces together, and it's a statement from the board of, and usually it's, policy is a statement from the board of what, a vision of what the board would like to see. In essence, what you'd probably be endorsing in a policy is the belief that there should be boundaries and limits to use, right? Or conversely, I've worked with boards who believe the opposite, that there should be no boundaries or limits, right? And you want to specifically say that, and then we as an administration get busy with the practices, right? So that's where we'd need a little bit of direction from you, if you want to see a sample policy, you want to pursue a policy. You'd have to really time it, I think it would be good to have it by August 18th. So you'd have to take a look at it in your July meeting, approve it on August 18th. But boards do that when they want to make a, you know, a specific statement. We're really, not only is the administration, the union, the teachers, the students going to get behind this practice, but we want to put, you know, an exclamation point, because we really believe this too, so.
How has conversation gone with our union as far as, you know, if we do put it in policy, it would be a requirement that all teachers would have to follow this practice?
It technically is a requirement now.
Well, but...
Right, but it put a lot more weight on that. I think there's agreement with our union about that. Probably the flashpoint, Dr. Shaw, is, we would have to have conversations, Dr. Johnson, Dr. Green, about the dean's office, and our union and our teachers are in department chairs. You could imagine with almost 4,000 students, right? How many times teachers are working with students who are going to their cellphone and it's not appropriate? You hope, if you require everyone to drop it off, you just cut down on 80% of that nuisance, right? But at what, what time do you make a referral to the dean's office, right? And that's why I kind of put it in there with attendance and tardy. One would hope in classroom management, that in the first few attendance or tardy issues, you'd work with your student. And then it goes to the dean where just, you know, Bob McBride will not put, he won't put it in the pockets, he keeps bringing it in, he's got a second cellphone and he pulls that thing out. And it's just, it's become, you know, hey, I've got, you know, 28 learners in this room, and I've worked and I've worked, I've tried to establish a relationship, and there's a non-compliance, right? And then obviously, our deans would have to have the appropriate follow-through, right, with that. So I think that's the point that we have to work out the most.
So do we need to say as a group that this is what we want to do? Because I personally, as a high school classroom teacher right now, it is a hugely difficult problem that we face on a daily basis. And I was massively disappointed to see that this didn't pass. And I contacted my own senator and representative, and the answer that I got was, it was that he was worried about the kids' safety. And I don't personally think that that's really the problem here. Our students, if they needed to take their phone out and make an emergency call for something, if there was, God forbid, something horrific going on in a school, they would still have access to their phones. No one's collecting their phones and taking them from them. But I do know as a classroom teacher and talking to other teachers even here, it's a problem. When you talk to other students, it's a problem. So I would personally like to see more teeth in a policy that makes it a forefront of facing this. Because I, the research that I've seen, there is not one positive thing that we are helping kids by being on their cellphones as long as they are. They need the downtime. And maybe the policy could include something about, like, they only have their phones out at lunch, before school, during lunch, after school. There is nothing positive that I have seen come from these kids having their cellphones all day. The only thing that I have seen personally and have witnessed is very bad things that didn't have to happen, but because of social media, it started at the beginning of the morning and it exploded by after lunch. And by after lunch, the police were involved. So those are my personal immediate experiences that I've witnessed with students of all ages, all backgrounds. It's never turned out to be a positive situation.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Here at Lockport, is it a big problem, a massive problem with students having their phone out?
You know, here's what I would say, if you ask the person who has a lot of experience with this, right? Would I say it's a massive problem? I wouldn't say it's a massive problem. Would I say that we would hear a lot of classroom teachers like Mrs. Stright, who are really just fatigued by dealing with it, right? You know, in 1953, there was a national survey of high school teachers, and you know what the number one nuisance was? Chewing gum. Now, we all might laugh at that, right? But let's think about it for a second, what kids were doing with chewing gum in classes in 1953. It was very annoying for teachers, right? I'm here to teach, not watch you play with your gum, throw your gum, stick your gum. But I think you would find many teachers like Mrs. Stright, who are just frustrated and would like to move on with the focus and not have the nuisance, right? But I think you'd find as many of our school social workers, guidance counselors, and even deans who would agree with Mrs. Stright, that, you know, some of the toughest things that we deal with are the kind of social media creep from school violence threats, all the way to, you know, inappropriate postings, all the way to, I'm taunting you. You know, it almost seems, we don't have a lot of these, but I always think one is enough. If you have a fight, it's generally set up by social media in advance, right? And one a year is enough, in my mind.
When you guys did your research, what did you find? Can you refresh yourself?
With regards to the cellphones?
Yeah.
In my personal experience, outside of the research we did in the group, I would say that it was a significant issue. I mean, in terms of one personal anecdote, my freshman year, we got reminded time and time again, you are not allowed to use your cellphone in the hallway. If you use your cellphone in the hallway, you are going to be reported to the dean. Did that ever happen at East Campus? Probably, but I can probably count it on one hand. It's, you know, the policy, I think, you know, while it may not be fully there, is most of the way there, but there's not necessarily a lot of enforcement going on with regards to students and their cellphones. And that's a multifaceted problem. But at the same time, I mean, if you just look boots on the ground and you say, I'm going to look at a hallway at East Campus, I'm going to look at a classroom in Central Campus, you're going to see a significant portion, you know, not like the majority, but a significant portion of students completely distracted on their phone for almost the entire class period. And it's a significant issue to their grades, to their understanding of the class, to their connection to other students. It's something that, you know, this board definitely needs to address. I'm glad that we're working on it. And, you know, I personally would have been in favor of that legislation. I know many of you would have too, but, you know, we'll see what happens with that in future years.
So we pulled up our notes from when we did our cellphone report. And the one main thing that we found is that while LTHS as a school has one main policy, teachers in classrooms themselves kind of have a lot of different ways that they have almost sort of mini policies. I can say, being a student, each one of my teachers handled how we would interact with our cellphones in the classroom in a different way. And so as students, what we really decided was that the universal system of a phone holders was what we needed to be done. And those main two things, part of that is that the consistency is key and respect on the front of that. Respect for our teachers' time, our teachers' respect for our time, our respect for our peers' time, and just the fact of this is a learning space and we're here to learn, and we can use that to the best of our advantage if we're consistent and respectful within the policy. And we also said that appropriate punishment leads to learning. And just as not necessarily about enforcing it, but following through on the enforcement so that it's about understanding the behavior that, well, the belief that drives the behavior of why we're acting this way, so that we can change that belief to become better productive students in the classroom. And then also, just kind of reframing, it's not just about rules and limitations so much as it is using our time to our advantage that we're here for a school day, we're not here to be on our phones.
And I don't want, Avery, did that cut you off?
No, you're good.
No, just kind of bringing it back to Mrs. Stright's point. You know, we do have, I have a couple things that I just displayed. You know, you have a policy about technology that is both in instruction and in students. So you could pull that all together into a single statement. I would probably recommend that it go under Section 7 under Students, right? Although this impacts adults too, believe me. But a singular policy would thread those together, and it's not unusual. You'll see tonight, the threads that exist between policies would pull all that together. It would sort of be a board statement of position, right? You're not committing to anything tonight if you direct us to do that, or later you have Dr. Shaw direct me to begin working on that, because you would get a draft and say, you know, next month, this works, this is what we thought, we wanted to see this. But it would pull it together, it would make a statement. I think it would acknowledge the dynamic that Mrs. Stright has, you know, really expressed, things that Michael, you know, has said as well. Just interesting, you know, if you look, it lands in the top five, right? These are the known, in the last month of school, known referrals for electronics. But you also have to think like, hmm, I wonder if disruption or disturbance in a class was related to electronics. I wonder if disrespect to the teacher or defiance was related to electronics, right? When you aggregate that, right? You know, you kind of get a sense of where it's at. It's not lanyards, it's not tardy to class, but you're hearing enough people and you know enough research, so, you know, it seems there's a consensus around the table that you'd like to see a standalone policy. What would that look like so you could at least react to it next month? Is there a different opinion?
No, I think you really, everybody spoke the same on it, that it's pretty much a domino effect. That cellphone being out could be a disruption, it could be a disturbance, could be disrespectful for acknowledging the rule in the classroom. And I'm glad that Mia mentioned it too, that I've noticed the teachers having different expectations in the classroom. It needs to be cohesive, in my opinion, so that the students know the expectations. Especially going to Central Campus, as they've all come from different people and walking in and knowing, okay, here at Central, this is the expectation, and when I move to East, that's going to be the same expectation. Because that's a lot of changes, and taking away that, I think, can help the focus, like Michael said. There's already the Chromebook that we've equipped every student with that should fulfill the technological need that they have. So really, outside of what Wendy noted, a medical or, you know, emergency situation, I think the Porter pockets should be something that should be instituted in every classroom.
And just to add to that domino effect quickly, I mean, when you get a single student that takes their phone out, that encourages other students to take their phone out. And when you don't have a clear school-wide and district-wide policy on how teachers should handle that, and you get this sort of pockets of, I'll allow it because what else am I going to do? Or I think this is ridiculous, I'm going to write them up every single time. You'll get classrooms where, again, one student takes their phone out, doesn't get written up, and then it just keeps on going. And it becomes an even worse and worse problem as days progress and as years progress.
It really upsets me, the fact that your senator said that it was a safety issue. The only reason is like, what does a phone do that protects you? There's nothing necessarily like, if something's going wrong in a building, 911's already called. You have procedures in place that will protect you. The only thing that could possibly get in the way is your phone going off or you commenting about it on social media and it going crazy. Like, there is no real way that it actually protects you. You guys grew up without it, what did you do? You still made it here, you are alive today.
Very cagey, Avery, very cagey. Do you know a rotary dial, have you ever heard, you know? Do you know what a party line is? I just want to ask you, okay?
So you still have... So you still had ability to contact your parents if need be, but it doesn't change much if you have to ask your teacher, hey, can I use my phone to call my parent? It doesn't change anything. You'd still have to do that when you guys were growing up to use a payphone. So it just, there's nothing really that changes, in my opinion. I feel as though people saying that it's an emergency issue doesn't really solve anything. It doesn't address any problem. The problem is the phone, and people are trying to go and push it onto something else so that we still have the phones, cause it's addictive.
And even then, I mean, our school will send out notifications and calls and texts and all sorts of stuff whenever there's an emergency, whether it's, you know, something like a tornado watch or something significantly worse. So the notion that every single student needs to be calling and texting while the event is going on, not only is it a distraction, it causes chaos. I mean, think, think in, in a hypothetical where, uh, students need to regroup after a certain point. What's gonna end up happening if everyone is on their cellphone, calling their parents, is you're gonna get parents going every which way. And this may have already happened, you know, going into bus lines and going to, having their kids walk across the street to go to Walmart or something, and there won't be a cohesive action plan. Or if there will, no one will follow it because they'll all be trying to, uh, talk to their parents or their friends instead of following the more appropriate decision.
Um, I think I'd like to suggest, uh, based upon the conversation here, that the board strongly considers directing the, the administration to at least draft a policy. Clearly, the students, uh, and again, that's why we're here, um, feel pretty passionate about it. Um, and from the, the education perspective, I think there's a great cause for it. Um, and I think just working on a draft is just a, a good way to step forward with that. And I would hope, maybe we need to get agreement through the board.
I mean, I agree with Ms. Stright. It's just something that we need to really enforce more and, and to help and support our teachers. You know, not to waste a lot of time, you know, doing the, take away your cellphone or put your cellphone away. You know, and takes away the time of teaching.
I would, I would agree too, that I just, I just want, just wanna say, I would agree too that we definitely need to draft a plan. But it also, as we've heard from students, it needs to be universal. If I can have my cellphone in period one, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to do it in second and third too. So it has to be concise with our administrators and our teachers, it has to be concise. And the only thing I will say about safety is if someone's cellphone is hooked to their glucose monitor, we, we need to obviously be, be aware of that and, and just make sure that that's in the policy, that it's understood, that if for some reason-
There'll be certain situations.
Yes, where it would be a medical thing, yeah, for sure.
That goes like a little bit of a different lane. Medical advice through our nurses. That is my legislative report, and we'll, we'll bring something back to you next month. And you have some policies you have to look at it, you know, as well, too.
All right, public comment follow-up. There was no pub- public comment at our last meeting. Uh, we'll move on to public comments. Um, do I need to repeat it if we don't have anybody signed up?
You do not have to.
Not have anybody signed up this evening for public comment. Uh, communications, we have none, correct? All right. All right, we have four freedom of information requests. You can see those in our agenda. All right, now we have our approval items, and I am backed up on my packet. Give me one moment. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May nineteenth Board of Education meeting as presented?
So moved.
No, I can second that.
Motion by Candace Garrettson, second by Ann Lopez Cuneva. Roll call.
Lopez Cuneva?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Johnson? Was I here?
You review-
On the phone.
Phone, you review a phone.
Ms. Johnson?
Approved.
Garrettson?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five special board meeting? All right, motion by Candace Garrettson?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. O'Halloran. Roll call.
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Lopez Cuneva?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes from May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five special board meeting as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Hayes.
I can second it.
Ann Lopez Cuneva? Roll call.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Lopez Cuneva?
Yes. Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Johnson?
I think it's staying.
You were not.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. O'Halloran, second by Candace Garrettson. Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes, thank you.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Lopez Cuneva?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes from the May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five special board meeting as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Lopez Cuneva?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hayes. Roll call.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
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 Garrettson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Cuneva?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the June twenty-twenty-five board expenses?
So moved.
I could second that.
Motion by Ms. O'Halloran, second by Ms. Lopez Cuneva. Roll call.
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Lopez Cuneva?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the May twenty-twenty-five treasurer's report?
So moved.
I can second that.
Second by Ann Lopez Cuneva. All right, Dr. McBride.
Um, if you have any questions, there's a couple of things I would just point out. Um, you know, this is the time of year, I would just encourage board members to click on, um, the five-year financial forecast. There's dynamics in there. We begin starting to look at this closer and closer. Primarily because next month, you will see, uh, a tentative budget. The budget that you're tonight voting on to amend i- is already been board-approved, we're amending the changes. We begin in July, earnest between July and September, approving your next budget that then leads, it leads to a levy. So this helps, it helps kind of understand where the trend of finances. You see a sharp spike at the end, that sharp spike at the end is very temporary, because that is from your, um, life safety bonds. Uh, the other important thing, and certainly Mrs. Kroy usually joins us, that I, we both would like to draw your attention to, is Click. Uh, Click is the, um, Collective Liability Insurance Cooperative. This is widely used throughout Chicago and area. It is a number of school districts that are all in a cooperative to do our, uh, liability insurance. And it's time for us to, to pay our premium. Um, uh, we're doing that, those costs, just like your own insurance costs, are going up. Uh, but we have found Click to be a good organization and, uh, a good, we're good members, we believe. Um, one thing I would tell you, just to relate a conversation that, um, I had with Mrs. Kroy, she might have had with Mr. Dusterhoff. But we discovered that, we, we do have five million dollars in, uh, cybersecurity, but to get the full benefit of that, there's just one last, um, uh, safety measure that we need to do that will probably cost us our estimate. We're gonna start working on it, about eleven thousand dollars. Uh, but for me, if we have a five-million-dollar policy, you know, just like your own insurance policy, there's all sorts of things you have to do to comply, right? You know, your car insurance doesn't cover you if you deliberately drive into a lake, right? Um, and if we can just get this one last low-cost piece, we're gonna get full coverage. Uh, but insurance encourages you to have that, right? Certain practices that are gonna prevent, um, cyber assaults, right? Um, so we're gonna put that in place. I don't know if there's any questions about Click, some people haven't seen Click. It's, it's the insurance that we purchase.
The only comment I would have is that, um, uh, I appreciate the evaluation and moving forward to go ahead and get that last piece of the policy, cause, um, having a cyber event and having to use, um, and pay for that, uh, to get past that and recover is quite an expensive endeavor. So I think it's money well spent.
You might ask yourselves, I'll just say, you might say, oh, is, you, you are approving in the treasurer's report, but Click is a purchase of services. Um, so it does not necessarily need board member approval, but we put it in there because it's such a, it's, you're proving in the treasurer's report and such a major part. You know, this, this covers every kind of even like property damage or vandalism to the building. A fire, a, a leak, right? Uh, you know, uh, water, things like that, it's covering all of that, so. Anything you wanna add, Mrs. Kroy? Conversation.
Being self-insured. So the, the power of, of, in my opinion, um, of being part of a cooperative like this, our, our health and benefits are actually part of a cooperative as well, a different one, right, local. Um, but the power of that is we pay our own, our own claims, right? Which means we kind of set the money aside, and so we're paying into Click, setting money aside to pay for claims. And then if we have good practices, right, um, uh, education with cybersecurity, education with how to properly lift things. Um, you know, to minimize workers' compensation claims, things like that. Um, we also have like a triage, nurse triage service to minimize costs when employees are injured and to handle things right away when they're injured, things like that. Um, you know, practices to quickly report claims. All those things help us minimize claims. And then that money sits there and then ends up coming back to us down the road. Um, I don't know, I could maybe, um, uh, remember, uh, Lopez Cuneva might be the only one that's been here since we've had a refund. Since I've been here, we had a couple of years where we got refunds, um, of some of that excess ones that we've never used. So, um, it does happen, it's just usually it takes years for claims to kind of finish up.
Final thing in this treasurer's report before you approve it, there's just two pieces at the bottom that I think are awfully important. Um, Mrs. Kroy did put in sort of a timeline for the budget process. This is a, a major piece of work that's coming your way. Mrs. Kroy and I invite you in. Um, you know, obviously we can't have all seven board members in a workshop, uh, unless you wanted to do that. But in, in, in twos and ones to really go over the budget itself, right? Um, so you understand that, you know, you know, from tentative draft budget to final budget, what, what are the dimensions, what are the line items, what are the things you're asking, but the whole process, if you click on that link in your report, we just previewed that for you this month. So more to come. And Mrs. Johnson, you had, uh, your hand up.
Is there a wellness component to this?
Uh, that would be part of our, um, health and welfare deficit.
Right.
Yeah, there, there are wellness components.
So I know a lot of insurance companies are adding that component to, to help out.
Right. And that, I think, would be the treasurer's report.
All right, I have a first and a second. Roll call.
Lopez Cuneva?
Yes.
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, um, up next I have my president's report. So a couple of things, um, as far as our board retreat, I did send a survey out to everyone. Um, and just kind of a brief history, we typically would meet for, uh, on a weekend day, we'd get together. We'd, um, meet with IASB in closed session and we'd kind of go through the agenda that, um, we set, um, for the day. So, um, as-
Did you see my message? I couldn't open it.
I did, so that's my next, my next topic. Nope, no problem. Um, so in there, it basically said, would you like to meet on a weekday, a weekend, an evening? Kind of just those different options, surprisingly enough. Um, the weekday, all-day session was, was the number one. I don't know, Ms. Johnson, if you wanna add to that. Um, I know we have a number of people that can attend.
Usually a weekend would be better, but I can go with the, with the group.
Okay. Um, so, and then going off of that, there were some topics that were, um, presented. And then let me get back to my responses. Um, topics that were presented, we were talking about talk, conflict resolution, OMA, coming to order, and then a few things with PR and just working as a team. Um, so previously, we've gone through a process called, um, getting, I think it's called Getting Started Right.
Getting Started Right.
All right, so Dr. McBride, if you could give an overview of what that looked like for us in the past?
Sure, um, get a, IASB has a number of different, you know, I could say seminars or workshops that they do. Um, and Getting Started Right is really for a board that has new members. You know, there's, there's, you know, been turnover, and usually what, you know, in Three Rivers, Natalie Williams is your representative, um, a- advisor, and she would run a workshop where you worked through a, a number of different things, like norms and protocols. In essence, what you knock out is, how are you gonna work with the superintendent? How's the superintendent gonna work with you? How are you gonna work with each other? How are you gonna handle communications? Coming to those types of agreements in advance, um, so that when you start getting into the issues that you'll get into during the year, you, you have an agreement, but, but between you, right? And it's obviously a facilitated discussion, it's not, you know, she's giving you some kind of lecture on what, you know, or, or slides. You're, you're gonna build it, you're gonna make it. The idea is to, to, um, have it come from you and have a discussion between you. Typically, what would happen is, uh, Natalie Williams, if we, when we set a date, IASB's gonna do it, would meet with Dr. Shaw and myself, and then ask on that menu of items, are there any things that you specifically want to address? You wanna spend a little bit more time with, right? But Getting Started Right mainly deals with communications between the seven of you, uh, primarily. How are the seven of you going, going to operate on, you know, everything from how you work with me, student board members, handle public comment, uh, your agenda? Oftentimes, there's a look at the agenda. In twenty-twenty-two, uh, when the board did Getting Started Right, changed some agenda, kind of. We used to have two public comments, we consolidated it to one, right? Put it at the front end of the meeting. Uh, so you just stem to stern and look at how you operate.
So more to come on that. Um, I will meet or speak with Dr. McBride, I'll, we'll go over what they had.
Right, and then an important, uh, thing I would ask all the board members to do, uh, to share with Dr. Shaw, is whether you want to be in closed session or not. So if you wanna have, be in closed session, you know, in order to have some candid conversations, to be drafting some things, you do have to have your state association present. Um, so IASB would have to be there. If you have, you could have lots of other facilitators, right? But if they're not from IASB, you cannot be in closed session. That's just Open Meetings Act.
Is there, are there any strong feelings, open session versus closed session, having IASB come versus another private entity? What have you done in the past?
We've used IASB, and we've also had them team up with some other people, so IASB was here, but we did have a PR firm come, she was from a PR firm.
Yeah, it's from a public relations firm.
Um, and she came and spoke with us about just, you know, the importance of speaking with one voice and, and going that route. I think that, um, in my opinion, and I don't know if anybody who's been on the board and been through this before has any other opinions, um, going into closed session and having candid conversations has been very valuable.
I agree. I would take the recommendation of those who've done it in the past.
For sure. I agree.
And, and Getting Started Right, I was gonna look up, you know, some of the more advanced ones. Um, you, you do get to shape it. It's not just a boilerplate, this is the curriculum. You know, we would shape it along the things that you really wanna highlight. I think a good mix for you is, and we did this with our, with Holly Bartekki, uh, the PR consultant, part in open session, part in closed session. Holly Bartekki, we did some scenarios, we did some thinking out loud, how would you handle this situation? We actually did that in open session. When we went into board member conversations with each other about how they wanted to operate, we went into closed session. Generally, that mix, I think, it makes a lot of sense.
Um, the next thing I have on here is just our sender's school meets. I know we've all been going out and, um, talking at public comment. I know Ms. Lopez Cuneva recently.
Ninety-one.
Oh, ninety-one, sorry.
Yes, ninety-one. Um, yes, but they're, they did the same thing that we're almost doing too. They're, they had a public hearing for their budget amendment also. Uh, and they're also going through constructions on their roofs, you know, at Millen and Grove. As a matter of fact, we, they had to move their, um, board meeting, which is usually on the second Tuesday, they had to move it up one week earlier because they were starting construction there. Um, they're also doing the, um, what is it, the, the- They're also doing the um, what is it, the the main construction on at Millen where they're going to be adding on for the secured vestibule. And they're going to add on an elevator, which I'm glad that 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 is happening. Um again, you know, just most of their consent and agenda items, normal, normal things that go through it. But I just want to highlight one of them. I did, um they did talk about the joint annual board conference, and I believe everyone of them, they're going. Um they did express an interest in that same venue, you know, for that Friday night. Um but yes, I, there is one new school board member there, and they did express, you know, they, each of the board members did give their opinion as far as the the how the value of going to triple I conference, you know, and as far as the professional development that one gets from that. Um other highlights, they did approve Dr. Wilkie's uh contract for five-year, five-year contract, you know? And then they all had board agreements uh also as far as, you know, the school, you know, but the school board members, they outside signed board agreements, which is what we do too. So that was really nice. And then um there was one question that Board President Laura Garrett did raise, uh or not not, she she asked if I was going to be um the only one attending as far as the liaison, and she sort of gave her um uh her her opinion or her recommendation that maybe every three or four months that we rotate, so different school board members rotate to different schools so that she has an opportunity to meet all of you, not just me. So that's, but I said I would bring that up and leave that to to us.
All right.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um so we do have two board meetings tomorrow night. Um I know that, or yes.
I will be attending Chaney Manji.
Uh if, um Wendy, I don't know if you can attend. I think that you were here when we discussed this. Are you able to go to Chaney?
I'm not. I have a field trip that I'm responsible for for uh your book. Sorry.
No, not a problem. So Ann will go um in your place. And then I know um Candace is going to go to Fairmont. And then Ms. Johnson, when is Wednesday's night still out for you and for Richland?
Uh I'm not going to be able to go there, yes.
Yep. So Candace is going to go in your place to introduce, yep.
Gotcha.
So.
Will do.
All right. So if you guys could touch base on that.
Yep.
Um so then after every uh uh, once we've made it to all of our sender schools, I will send an email out to all of the presidents. Um we're we're looking to have better communication and work together. Um I talked with Dr. McBride, Lockport is willing to host these meetings, so thank you for that. Um and then we'll move forward from there. Um the next topic I wanted to bring up, I I know I had two board members bring up that they would not be able to make our July meeting date. So I just wanted to throw it out there and see if we wanted to propose propose a change in date. And one of the main reasons for that is because we will be um presenting our tentative budget that evening. Um and I just think it's really important for everybody to get the same information at the same time. So if possible, I don't know if we can look at calendars and see if the following uh Monday, the twenty-eighth would be a viable option.
July?
Mm hmm.
I would still be out of town.
Okay.
Um I can do the previous.
You can.
I believe.
It's originally for the twenty-first, and that doesn't work.
Oh, no, not that. I meant before.
Fourteenth?
Yeah.
I don't know if the budget, the tentative budget would be ready at that point, so. So um.
I would also be out of town still on the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I'll be back the twenty-ninth.
The twenty-eighth.
Can you get back on the twenty-eighth?
I would be, I would, that evening, so I'd be able to do the twenty-ninth. I don't know about you, Wendy.
I I will be here on the twenty-ninth.
I will not be here the twenty-first.
Um. Freaky vacation schedule.
It is.
Vacation schedule. Um any opposition to an off day later on that week, like the thirty-first?
No opposition for me.
I'll be.
You'll be gone?
I'll be in the zoo, moving my daughter out.
So I'll be. Um maybe what I'll do is I'll just send out another quick.
Yeah.
Hey, what works, what doesn't?
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that. We'll go that way.
You know, we'll talk offline too. You need, you need a minimum of thirty days to put the budget on display for the public. Um a lot, a lot of boards don't meet in July at all. Um that gets us out of the rhythm and tempo of having you approve a treasurer's report, right? Um and this is the, this is the reason why a lot of boards don't meet in in July. But we'll, we'll also, I'll talk, why don't you all talk and I'll talk with Stephanie? We just want to make sure we hit that, and then also that we have enough time to present you with the proper treasurer's report, right? Because if it was, you know, earlier in July, you'd only get about a a week, a week and a half of of invoices you'd be approving. So it'd be very difficult to get to the tentative budget.
Okay. So keep your eyes, I'll send a text message and keep your eyes open for an email from me. That's all I have for that.
All right, uh superintendent's report, couple, a couple of different things. And a little bit of this is 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 Dan, so I'm going to, you know, um kind of go right through a few accolades, you know, like everyone said, graduation, spot on, very well done. Congratulations to Dr. Johnson, presiding over her first one, Angela Adolf, great job with the LTHS uh foundation, you know, it it was outstanding. And again, congratulations to the students that we acknowledged tonight, you know, elite athletes, and congratulations to our student board members are rolling off. Um I'll just walk through, I want to do a couple of things tonight. With your permission, I'm going to take cell phone and cell phone policy out. We, I think we already had a robust conversation. Um uh and so I'll I'll probably only focus on one and two, and then just mention three. Uh why don't I just give you an update and have an opportunity for you to ask ask questions? Uh Neil Offerman for Burglin Construction is is here with us. Any questions that you have about um what's happening at Central? And then I want to update you to the financing that you're doing. There's, you know, even though we've had a bond sale on April twenty-eighth, there is, there are more things that are happening, you know, with bonds. So why don't I open it up? Any questions? We've had good initial onsite construction meeting. I think we've had two now. Uh things are moving apace. Uh Burglin has been fairly aggressive. If you go by there on Saturday, you will see people are working. Scaffolding is up, stairs are up to the roof. Uh already, there's something called needle shoring that is supporting the masonry work. That happened very, very quickly, so masons could get at that masonry work. I've been pleased with the speed of it. I don't think we've hit, uh Neil, any insurmountable. There there's a few things we've looked at, how are we going to handle this? What what is this, right? Um but there hasn't really been anything that seems to be insurmountable. Yeah, why don't you come on up and join us? Um uh Neil, and if you don't mind, Michael, yeah, sharing with Mr. Offerman, uh the the mic.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So again, I'm Neil Offerman with Burglin Construction. Um so I'm the construction manager, working uh not only last summer, but the summer on Central Campus. Uh we're two weeks in of the eleven-week, uh I guess, summer slamwork, we always call it. And we're doing thirty thousand square foot of roof replacement and decking replacement, and then also about a hundred and two lintel replacement. So right now, the main scopes of work are uh getting the needle shoring done, prepping the scaffold, uh interior and exterior to make sure that the building is uh is sufficiently um supported while we remove those lintels. Uh we are expecting those lintels to be delivered, start being delivered on site this week, so you should start seeing some steel coming out roughly probably by Saturday, maybe even next Monday. Uh as well as we are breaking the roofing up into about nine different phases of the thirty thousand square foot roof uh replacement. And we're just doing the, what the roof membrane is called, is EPDM product. We are uh gluing that down as I left at five o'clock today um on phase three. So we're through two phases. I will say these phases are the wood deck replacement, which I will say is a little easier because it goes quicker than the metal deck. Um so that has been going surprisingly well. Uh and then once we get into our metal deck replacement, Wednesday or Thursday, uh on the southwest corner, uh we'll start to get an idea of how long that metal deck's going to take us, but right now I feel like there are a couple of days ahead of schedule, so.
And and just to remind the board, it's one project, two summers. So, you know, half of the roof, half of the masonry, lintel work, half of the electric, and twenty twenty-six, we'll finish all of that off. Why half? Um we didn't want to jeopardize the start uh the opening of school, you know, wanted to make sure uh that we could get that done. You know, in the needle shoring, what I would really recommend, if any of you want to walk around, it's a great time to walk around and see the kind of construction that's being done on the building, like the needle shoring in and of itself is a interesting thing, just architecturally, structurally um uh to do. One added thing I would tell you is that whenever we open up a building, it's a great opportunity to have our structural engineers come through, and we did have P's Borst, our structural engineers. Just come through, take advantage of the fact that things are opened up and, you know, what they might notice, what they might report, what they might suggest, just to make sure that we're not missing anything. Any questions for Neil? You did a great job.
Do we have any technology things we need to uh replace in having a roof open up and stuff like that? No?
No, not really. No. And then just another accolade, uh I know you might be aware of this from my update, but Burglin has hired two student interns. We're doing safety compliance, doing some things on the site, you know, and we're thinking of having them come and do a report in July. Uh there's their experience, and those are paid interns, by the way.
That would be wonderful.
And so we hope to continue in the next summer, right? Um great, you know, uh Neil will be here at most of our board meetings, so if you have questions about what's going on at Central, he's, you know, expert at it and and will be here. Uh you might wonder, how is this getting paid for, right? Burglin is wondering that too, because they would like to get paid for their work. Um so I want to give you just a little bit of an idea where we're at right now in terms of of financing and what's happened. Uh the last time that we touched on this was April twenty-eighth. Uh you received a memo from me uh that that Stephanie put together. We did it right at the board meeting, and the reason why is because that morning at ten AM was actually uh the bond sale, right? And then what happens after the bond sale? So just a few things to, we didn't have very much time, it was happening that morning. You probably saw in an email that I did uh to member or members of the community, just recapitulating, you know, you've really been working on this. You know, May twentieth, October twenty-first, um you know, all the way into a number of times, you know, February twenty-fourth, you had a hearing about the bonds. March seventeenth, you did the re- the parameters resolution, what these bonds, you know, can and cannot be used for, all the way up until uh authorizing the sale, and then the sale was executed uh i- itself. Um in that memo, uh what that memo did, and I'll just open that memo up that was just uh intended to board members, we talked about it. Uh but this was that bond sale memo. This is not a document, it's required to be included in any kind of board. Um but I think there's a couple of really important things that we mentioned in that board meeting. Municipal bonds are much like construction in that they are bidded publicly. So various financial institutions bid for them. And much like a building, and the cost of a building is the cost that construction companies will bid to build that building. We we might want it to be this really low cost, but if you have six construction companies and say, no, it's this much higher cost, that is the cost. And uh we presented this to you, um and then I put it in a board update. Uh some of the new board members might not have had access to it because you weren't at the board at the time. But you can see the the competitiveness um here of of the rates, the interest rates, right? And what you see is is something called TIC, and that is uh the total interest cost. That is the actual interest rate. Now, if we show you some of the documents related to this, you will see different interest rates. For example, in a closing document, you'll see an IRS rate, which is lower than this, because presently, the federal government does allow for these bonds to be tax-free. There was concern, and there still is concern that these, that won't stick around forever, right? Um so this is important just to see the competitiveness of this. But I think what's really important for you as board members is is the TIC, the total um interest cost, right? I'm mentioning it this because as you kind of saw in the email that I was responding to and Facebook posts, there has been a a document that's not our document, Mazero Financial put it out, and uh PMA Financial put it out that is not targeted to document the cost of the loans. It's targeted for buyers. So basically, this document, a second document, this is a hundred and eighty-two pages. Um really what this document works as is this document from Mazero, the underwriter, they they were the successful buyers of the bonds. And PMA, our municipal advisors assisting them. This table and all of the other contents in here, the audience is uh a prospective buyers. These, the audience is not you. Uh the audience is not the public, the audience is them trying to convince people that Lockport Township High School is a worthwhile investment, right? Um there's two things. One, the rate, they don't use for this illustration, the actual rate, the total interest cost. So that's been misreported on some Facebook posts, it's been misreported um in the email that we received today, and hopefully we cleared that up. But also, one of the things that I think is really important is this yield column. The yield column is is being, you know, Mr. Bellage or Mrs. Bellage was reporting the yield column as a comparison of interest rates. That is not what the yield column is, so you understand. The yield column is if you were an investor and you were looking at this prospectus and saying, should I buy these bonds? The yield rate is the rate of return that you can expect for your investment. It's not an interest rate. Seen a couple of different Facebook posts, and then the the email we received today referring to a market rate. There there isn't a market rate in municipal bonds because it's publicly bidded, it's competitively bid. And there's been a number four point two five, which I actually think is someone is looking at the yield, not at an actual interest rate. So all of that is, I guess, to kind of bring it back, and and Mrs. Hayes had an email to to us today is, one, you know, are we paying a competitive interest rate? Well, the public bidding process ensures that you have a competitive interest rate. What is the real interest rate? The real interest rate is four point five two percent on your bonds, which if you scan the horizon of lending that's happening, is right consistent with what you would see with lending right now. Just kind of a quick answer, um you might have saw in mine, why finance the entire amount now, right? Well, lots of us did that when we bought a home, right? We took a twenty, a thirty-year mortgage out, we did the full financing upfront. And we probably did that for a number of different reasons. We wanted to lock into an interest rate, we wanted to secure the loan for a number of years. We were investing in a building, we wanted to make payments that would not, you know, break us, right? Well, we're really doing the same exact thing. Um the community in two different surveys has said to you, we want you to do the essential maintenance, but but number two, we don't want you to precipitously increase your line item, right? And so you followed that. You uh have done a debt service abatement for two years in a row, I'm going to recommend it again, so that you are not having taxpayers pay um our bond and interest payments. You're taking that from um cash reserves, from fund balances, right? So you've done that. You've also used a strategy, um this strategy, not what is as a sale prospectus, to have a competitive, a reasonable interest rate over time that enrolls current taxpayers and future taxpayers in the payment. And just like you as a homeowner who took out a twenty or a thirty-year loan, you now know exactly what the interest rate is that you're going to pay. So you can lock into that. If markets are volatile, which the bond market is hitting a. You know what your interest rate is. When you start making budget decisions, you can in the next month absolutely plan consistently. You will know that you've got a locked-in interest rate that you can plan from. And then the final thing is you can use a very astute financial strategy. It looks like about nine million dollars of your fifteen mil- dollar bonds, you are not going to use this summer on construction. You can invest that on behalf of um the taxpayers, earn interest on that, and then you'll have to make a choice about what you want to do with that interest, that your investment. You can use that to pay for costs of construction, basically reinvest that, or you can use that to make interest payments on the actual loan itself. So what you're doing is you're recycling that money back into itself, um further reducing the burden uh on your taxpayers, right? Um so let me just pause there. I know that's a ton of information, but that's what's happening now, you know, the, I I've seen the prospectus today. You know, we saw a lot of quoting in the prospectus in an email you received. Um but that's really geared to buyers of bonds, it's not geared to you. Uh the, these are the real costs of what you're, what you're, you're um dealing with. Also, um you're going to notice that you're getting fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars. And you say, well, wait a minute, I thought it was fifteen million dollars. Just like a home um mortgage loan that you would have, there are costs of issuing the bonds. And by doing it all in one fell swoop, you you issued those bonds one time and you experienced those costs only once. Every time you do a bond sale, you're going to experience those costs. and, you know, those are just additional costs, so you saved yourself on that. So let me just, that's a ton. Um, but just want you to know what, where the financing is right now, what's going on. And that there's just these two, what the board is paying and what, uh, um, you know, a prospectus for, for potential buyers is, it's just two different documents. Questions I can answer, or, you know, try to put that all in writing. I do have my response if you want to see it in writing. It's complex. And, you know, the one thing I would say you probably saw in the email, I just would encourage, I, I'd encourage anybody, anyone in the community, um, this is very complex, right? There's, there's a reason why you have Mesro Financial as the underwriter, there's a reason why you have PMA Financial and PMA Securities. There's a reason why you have someone like Stephanie Corey. We will, anytime. I, I really wish that, that in the community, and I would certainly ask you as board members, if someone raises a question to you, to say, listen, this is complex, let's sit down, you know? Let's make sure we get the right documents and really look at the right documents. Let's talk through what those mean in the long haul. Let's have a conversation first and dig into these things. And if we're inaccurate, we're not helpful, then, you know? But if the, the interest, your interest, our interest, anybody who's on Facebook, their interest is really educating the public. I just think with complex matters like finance, loans, um, the, the time is well spent, is what I would say. And finally, I would say that you've got two surveys that this kind of strategy, it corresponds to what we do, uh, to finance our own lives, and it also corresponds to what your community has said in two surveys. So I'll take any questions. That's, I, I didn't leave a lot of room.
I don't necessarily have any questions. I just thank you for walking us through that again. You know, we've, we've had numerous discussions about this topic, um, over multiple board meetings, and, uh, and as you say, it is complex, it's hard to keep track of, of, you know, the numbers and, and the processes over time, so, um, uh, I just appreciate you walking us all through that again, and, uh, I would concur that if there's community members that have questions of any kind, especially regarding this, uh, that they take you up on your, your generous offer to meet with them. I, it makes it a lot more clear.
It did. I, I very much appreciated the email that we got today, and I appreciate that you, uh, went over it publicly so that it could be seen by anyone who's not here tonight, so thank you.
And then that obviously goes for board members too, you know? Tell Stephanie I kind of nerd out on this. We, we actually enjoy working with people and sitting down and talking, talking through this. It's, we enjoy it, we think it's good, and we, we, we're excited when people are excited, right? That they're, they're really interested in it, so. Facility master planning council, very quickly, uh, we're on a little bit of a summer hiatus so that DLA can put together all the, um, uh, the work that they've done, and reconvene that council in August, have them preview that facility master plan for East that you'll eventually see. I think we got cell phones and we already dealt with student board members, so. That is my report.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, moving on to the curriculum report. Dr. Huntington.
Thank you. So.
So thank you for this opportunity to talk about my labor of love for the last five years, which was the district um, I know that I gave you a eight or nine-page memo, um, at the last meeting, um, and that meeting, we had lots to do. And so, um, I was asked to kind of come back and just kind of share through, um, some of that presentation, and then I'm hopeful that if you have questions, that you'll feel comfortable in asking them. Um, obviously, um, I, uh, asked Dr. McBride today, like, want me to throw together a quick little slideshow? And he said, sure. So here's my quick little slideshow. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about goal one, and kind of the way I approached, um, the review was to kind of look at progress made, right? Because we are always in a cycle of continuous improvement, no matter what. When we achieve goals, we always want to maintain them. When we don't fall short, we want to reconfigure and see how we can, um, move forward. And so I kind of broke the goals up into progress made, and then recommendations and kind of conclusions for, um, each of this, uh, DIP plan that we have been doing for the last five years. And so when I look at
And just not to interrupt, um, what I just did. This has been effectively our, our strategic plan. And I know the board, when we first, uh, worked with District Management Group, there's a little sticker shock. Um, you know, the cost of, of doing this work. But I think if you look back over your shoulder, this is, this has literally lasted five years. So just kind of put it in that frame, sorry.
And that's fine. We use a lot of grant funding also. So if you want to go to, um, the next slide, and, and, and again, that's just the, um, the goal, right? So our first goal was looking at our tier-one support, so that's the actual instruction that students receive on a daily basis, and how we can work through, um, supporting our teachers to differentiate for all the students that they see in their classrooms. And so the progress that we made is we talked through and we, we looked at our, um, ability to use shared language and utilize walkthroughs, um, to make sure that, um, we're all speaking the same language. We looked at evaluation and equity, um, talking through instructional evaluation aligned, um, so making sure that students had the options and, um, equity and rigorous coursework, as well as, um, making sure our evaluations are supporting teachers in learning, how to best support students in their classroom. Next, next slide, sorry. Yeah, okay, so that was that slide.
In your rhythm now.
Well, I'm sorry, we're out of rhythm. Okay.
No, that's good.
All right, great. Um, our next slide is talking about how we've made progress in looking at our coaching supports for teachers, as well as our EL supports, not only for teachers teaching EL students, but also for EL students themselves. So we wanted to make sure that we were supporting and, and kind of doing intensive, um, coaching, especially for our EL population, um, as they have grown dramatically over the last five years. Um, and so we also have increased our English language learner supports as well. Um, looking at additional progress, we also talk about integration and collaboration. So really working with teachers to get them into, um, coaching and evaluation cycles, um, that works with them on reinforcing their own growth. Um, and then also with our department chair meetings, um, on instruction. We met weekly, um, to share strategies of best practices in that regard. And finally, in goal one, our last progress made would be under this category of integration and collaboration. So, um, making sure that, um, oh, I doubled up that one, sorry. We can, I did that one away. Um, okay, so talking about our next issue is recommendation. So we've done all this work over the last five years, what do we see, um, our next steps would be? So we can continue to look at, um, expanding our coaching, um, scaled mini-coaching styles, reaching more teachers across grades and content areas. Um, the board had approved, um, we have three instructional coaches that really started as kind of literacy coaches, right? And we've morphed those positions. Um, we have, um, you know, two of the, the, uh, instructional coaches are reading teachers, were reading teachers. And then we brought along, um, Mrs. Pratt, who is an AP, um, you know, foreign language teacher as well. And so we're looking at ways that, and, and they're high commodity, they are working every single day, they have lots of teachers that want to meet with them. Um, and also I'm working with them to do some, um, professional development district-wide. So that, they, they are freed up for three periods out of the day to support teachers. Um, and, and we're feeling that stretch, you know, as we get more students of need and more, um, need and requests for coaching, um, we anticipate that we may be coming back to the board to talk about increasing, um, instructional coaching in the future. Um, we want to continue our ongoing professional, uh, development and differentiation. Um, we want to make sure that we're supporting our early and new career teachers. Trying to retain teachers in this, in this day and age is rough, you know? And so we want to make sure that we are giving them, um, direct support, and our instructional coaches allow us to do that in a non-evaluative way that supports teachers. We want to make sure that we're monitoring and expanding access. Um, we have a lot of students who we've raised the bar for over the last few years, and, um, they are killing it. But it also requires a lot of, um, targeted interventions, support, and, and encouragement a lot of times. And so, uh, we want to continue to monitor those outcomes and support students in reaching, um, for that rigor. We want to continue our partnerships with EOS, um, and really deepening those supports in the third year that we're with them. And then, obviously, we know it's on the agenda, but we really need to consider adding some course options and maybe look at that eight-period day, um, that would allow for people to expand their AP dual-credit opportunities while also taking those really important college and career readiness classes as well. So in conclusion, for goal one, um, we feel that we've made strong progress with shared language, strategic coaching, and aligned evaluation. We feel our next steps need to continue to grow coaching capacity, deepening differentiated instruction training, and fostering collaboration. And our ultimate goal is to empower all of the educators to effectively meet the diverse needs of students and sustain academic excellence. Goal two. So this goal is to focus on the systematizing and, um, making sure that our interventions are accessible and consistent and data-driven, um, in order to support all learners in their area of need. So otherwise known as our MTSS process. So when we talk about our progress made, um, I talk through academic interventions. We have fully developed academic interventions and programs. Things like our Compass, um, class period with teacher-directed or student-selected help sessions. Our Math Science Plus for time-bound, standard-specific supports are probably my, my, the, the big flags, right? The, the biggest things that we're doing. We also have weekly student success team meetings where we're reviewing students and looking at not just individual students, but we're looking for, um, trends and data so we can provide interventions and be proactive instead of always be reactive, so we can catch them before they have those issues and struggles. We've made progress on our cross-team structure, so really working through identifying tier-two skills, sharing responsibility across disciplines, looking at our executive functioning skills for students, as well as content gaps, and then also our, um, academic return on investment study, our AORI. Um, it has informed, um, changes for team structures, coaching, and schedules. And our, uh, additional progress made is our MTSS development. So looking at our systematizing, our MTSS and five oh four process, making sure that, that stu- we're getting good data and information and evaluation, and improving compliance and delivery. We have a flowchart for our MTSS process. You would think that you, a, a, a flowchart wouldn't be a big deal. It's a big deal. It's very helpful, and it, um, was time-intensive and something that we're proud of. And then also working on our professional development and MTSS and staff training to build consistently and understanding that implementation.
And just for, you know, make sure that we're all on the same page, MTSS stands for Multiple Tier System of Support. And basically, you know, it's no different than if you go to a hospital, right? If you have, you know, certain responses, here's what happens next if you're struggling as a patient. You hope someone knows where you go next, right? And it's developing that in a way, you know, the flowchart might sound, sound hopelessly bureaucratic, but it's really helping a classroom teacher understand student struggles, a counselor's student struggles, a social worker's student struggles. Where do they go next? What's their next stop in order to ensure success? And that that's really manifested and clear to people.
Right. Thank you for defining MTSS.
Right, yeah, I mean, we can, we apologize when we
Sorry.
Could you also define EOS as well?
EOS is our Equal Opportunity Schools Partnership, and so we're
Thank you.
Program that, um, helps us identify students who, um, could, could get into more advanced coursework, and, and, um, it gives us a lot of data about how to support students into that, um, second tier of more, um, rigorous coursework.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Please stop me at any time. I know, I, there's a lot of educators in the room, so I always think like, oh, you guys know what I'm talking about, so please stop me. Um, so our next step would be the recommendations in this area. Obviously, we want to continue to expand our support and provide tier-two interventions for students who need them. So making sure that we're using, um, identified skills to build, um, those targeted modules. We're looking at ensuring alignment with tier-one classroom instruction for the interventions as well. We want to strengthen our MTSS and five oh four plan integration. This is going to be an ongoing effort. Um, and we want to just continue to create seamlessly, legally-aligned, and instructional support structures. Um, we want to monitor and expand access. That's one of our big goals with Equity. We want to make sure everybody has an opportunity. So looking at, um, you know, building data fluency among our staffs, making sure, um, teachers can see early warning signs, looking at attendance, grades, behaviors, um, also trying to build in more of those proactive interventions that we continue to, um, find success with. Um, we want to continue the process of reviewing our AORI. We, we think that that's an option for us to look at, um, a lot of these great programs, are they working? Um, are they cost-effective? How can we continue to, um, make every dollar stretch and, and meet the needs of all students? So we feel that we've met some substantial progress in the area of MTSS systemation, systemat- uh, systemization. So close, so close. Um, building capacity and structured supports. We have a strong foundation for proactive equitable intervention. And our next steps are ongoing training for staff, clearer data systems, sustainable communication structures, and equity access for all students. Goal three. Um, I want to ensure that this is, um, a, a goal that really looked at our students that are at risk and how we're supporting them and ensuring that they have staff working with them that have a deep understanding of, uh, content as well as pedagogy. And so we've made some significant progress in our staffing and increasing the expertise of our students. We've increased EL and bilingual staffing. We've got more certified EL and bilingual professionals hired, and we've expanded access to specialized language supports. Um, our instructional course, the course, um, I'm sorry, our instructional coaches are really leading the charge in working with all teachers on developing, um, strategies and services and, or supports in order to meet the needs of students with IEP and our EL learners as well. And we have ongoing professional developments embedded throughout the classrooms. We continue to make progress in our co-teaching and strategic staffing. I like that term, strategic staffing. What does that mean? Well, that means that if we have a teacher that's teaching a special ed instructional Math II class, that that teacher is also teaching a co-taught general ed Math II class. So they are embedded in the curriculum, and they build their own skills so they can differentiate and, um, meet the curricular requirements for that instructional classroom. So we have expanded those co-teaching models. We are using co-teaching in EL as well as special education, um, still. Um, we are promoting inclusive and targeted instruction, and we're looking at, um, strategic push-in supports. When we see there's needs, um, we look at different options and opportunities and really target those interventions in the general ed classroom.
And when you see that, you know, we're, we're, you know, EL, English language learners, right? Uh, those are our students who have language needs. And, you know, IEP, some of these acronyms, like, you know, Angela said, you see these acronyms that we use as shorthand, just, just stop us, right? You know, what you're really getting in here is, is very, very specific needs. Um, moving from, you know, our first goal, tier-one is everyone, down to goal two. You know, you saw things like Compass and Math Plus and Science Plus that literally came out of this strategic plan, literally changed our schedule one time. Now this is kind of funneling to very, very specific learners, um, who can struggle in a large public system, and what's, what's next for them? Um, in this particular case, you know, co-teaching where you have a regular ed teacher, and then you have a specialist in the same classroom.
So our recommendations for goal three is to, um, continue the sustainability and support. Looking at our professional development for new co-teaching teams. In fact, I'm trying to, it's like herding cats in the summer, trying to get some of them together. Um, I think I'm, I'm, I'm going to be able to do some, um, professional development in July for those new teams. Our new teachers are really excited to come on board, so they're willing to come in in July. Um, and then, uh, looking at, um, utilizing, um, the partnerships between special education and EL as well. We, we share some common students, and so, um, you know, like, one of our EL teachers is also special ed certified, EL certified. So we, we look for unicorns, that's what I like to call, people that have multiple, um, areas of skill. Um, and then we want to look at adding, you know, potential instructional coaches for co-teaching. My co-teaching teams want more professional development, and, um, our coaches are uniquely situated to push into these classrooms and to support those teams to develop and, and enhance their skills in the co-teaching classroom. Looking at training and program, so ongoing PD, you know, looking at that differentiated instruction. If you can do the work in the general ed classroom, then they don't have to go to tier-two interventions. Um, we're looking at research-based practices like SIOP, which is a sheltered instruction observation protocol, um, as well as
The, the most worst name, uh, it, SIOP is The most worst name, uh, it, SIOP is, it, it is not what it, it, what you think it is. You know, basically what it is, the protocol for when you have English language learners concentrated in a single classroom. How do you make sure that they read, write, speak and listen every single lesson? But SIOP sounds science fiction. We didn't make it up.
Sounds so cool. I was like, I want to go to that training. Um, and then enrich, uh, or embed our professional development within coaching cycles and our PLC. So in conclusion, our goal three implementation is strong and grounded within expert-led practices. Uh, systems are in place to support struggling learners throughout well-trained teams. And our next step would be to continue to sustain this momentum through professional learning, refine co-teaching and coaching stretches. And prioritize the impact uh, through ongoing evaluation. And our last and final goal is goal number four, providing proactive, consistent and systematic SEL. Social emotional learning and behavioral supports for all students. So we want to talk about the progress that we made. Well, um, obviously, oh.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm pointing at you. I just want to make special emphasis because a number of you, um, uh, the let, most recently I had a conversation with Ms. Johnson. When you interviewed new student board members, they brought up um, social emotional learning, right? And I just want to kind of give you a, a context for this. And this is five years worth of work on this. Just give you a context, yesterday I was, I was at a luncheon or dinner really, and I was sitting with the rear admiral in the Navy who commands um, Great Lakes. And the Navy's unusual, it only has one basic training facility. In time, bless you, for about five thousand sailors up at Great Lakes at almost all times, rotating out of basic training. And the number one thing that we talked about is how the Navy is experiencing uh, you know, social emotional challenges. Of students coming from across the nation to become, you know, sailors in the Navy and just went on and on and on about what, what they're experiencing as a learning institution. So just kind of putting that in a bigger, bigger nationwide context as well. So, sorry to interrupt you.
Right, no, and SEL isn't something that happens in a guidance counseling office and uh, with a social worker, right? So um, what we've been working through is looking at scaffolding our SEL instruction. By looking at how we are able to implement that kind of instruction throughout our grade levels and throughout our coursework. Um, we are also looking at those targeted two and three SEL interventions for students that do need more. So we've established systems for students with identified needs. And we are um, providing those services delivered by our trained support staff, whether that would be guidance or counseling or other areas. Um, we've also made progress in the tools and the data that we're using, right? Like SEL is hard to kind of drill down what the concerns are and what the issues are. And so we do have regular assessments that's got guiding our support, our supports and our programming. We are um, using still, uh, we have created our own student resilience plan and we've launched that. And it's uh, an opportunity to support students in academic and behavioral recovery through reflection and planning. And it was really important for us to start this immediately, um, especially with the amount of students that we really were encouraging to level up academically. And resilience is one area where students sometimes struggle with when, when they're, they're coming up and, and things are harder, right? They always got the A in the general ed class. Now they're getting a C or a B in their AP class and it's hard. So working on those resilience skills um, was something that we're pretty proud of. Um, and then also really using um, frontline student analytics lab to uh, watch. And be able to look at those early warning systems that we have in place. And then finally, our professional learning is also an area of progress. So looking at emotional intelligence training, we, we had leadership that attended the DMG conference on emotional intelligence. Dr. Shaw was with us for that one. Um, we focused on staff and student well-being. And looking at restorative practices at the freshman center, really emphasizing growth, accountability and repair. Um, and deepening student reflection and support. You know, if we can provide those services early, then we don't have problems when they come to East Campus. So our recommendation in the area of SEL um, is to expand our two-tier supports. We are always looking at opportunities and ways to support our students that need more support. Looking at revising our student resilience plan, really thinking in terms of the student voice, what did they find helpful? How can we make those adjustments and, and get that structured goal setting and agency built in um, at that level? Looking at our strategic alignment, we want to make sure that we're aligning um, our use of SEL, the EOS. Here's, here's the whole vegetable salad here, words out. Bringing all these things to, together to really identify priorities, strengths, gaps, action plans. Um, continue staff training and emotional intelligence, focusing on cultural responsiveness, empathy and student connection. And maintaining and working on our consistency and practice. So looking at expanding our restorative practices across both campuses. Um, so in conclusion, SEL systems are increasingly data-driven, tiered and responsive. Uh, we have strong foundation and resiliency planning, early identification and staff development. And our next steps are to deepen tier two work, revise resilience supports with student input. And ensure consistency and equity and behavioral supports across campuses. Questions?
Five years' worth of work, just like that. And you know, really I think the intent is um, for you as board members to understand. That, you know, this is a very large strategic plan, that, that the board in 2020 predating um, the pandemic. Who, who knew? The board asked us to develop a strategic plan around what was being provided for learners. You, you hear these phrases, tier one, tier one is everyone, every class, tier two is more specialized treatment. Of students, intervention, assistance, help. Tier three is even more specialized. So the board was, was interested in really looking at students in our system who struggle. And, and, and what either is happening, needs to happen, or should be revised to happen uh, for those students, right? Like the two I think marquee, um, you know, you can see most visibly in this plan are compass. And math plus and science plus, right? Uh, those are two things that are available to all students, for, for example. And then just refin- refining how we identify, move along and make sure that we're addressing the needs of students. Kind of bring it back to, to Mrs. Johnson and to something that um, Dr. Huntington said. You know, social emotional growth, dealing with resilience, self-aff- advocacy, confidence. It's not something that's only going to happen in your school counselor's office. You know, trying to build a system that includes everything from grading supports, uh, we do surveying through panorama. Our students have really grown in their self, um, uh, in their resilience and their self-efficacy. All the way to have grading procedures that, that things like um, revising and retaking and um, rewriting. Uh, work that you're doing is, is a way that builds self-efficacy and resilience, right? You know, so sort of comprehensive across the, the, the um, spectrum.
I do have a few questions for you. I love that you're using the uh, instructional coaches. And I heard you say they were coaching and teaching at the same time and I was like, wow. So you said they're being stretched thin and you're looking at bringing on some more coaches. Are you looking hypothetically, right? If we look at this in the perfect world. Would it be that you would like to have individuals solely be instructional coaches? Or are you looking to pull and have more part-time coaches?
Well, that depends, right? So I, I think um, we have found a lot of success with having our coaches. Still live the day-to-day teaching experience. Um, I, I think that there's value in that and our teachers appreciate that. It's not somebody coming in that hasn't been in a classroom for a long time. They're still teaching. Um, what I would see is, you know, right now, the instructional three that we have, they teach one and two. And then later in the afternoon is when they're doing all their coaching. I, I would see like maybe we have co- like three additional coaches that maybe teach six and seven and then have morning um, that they can do coaching. Um, obviously, you will get a memo from me throughout the year where we could type, kind of talk about the different processes and, and.
Sure.
Proposals, um, but we, we haven't figured it out, right? I'm not here with a proposal asking for.
Not at all. I heard you say, we're looking for more, so I was just trying to see.
Yeah, we're, we're feeling the need, you know, and we've been gathering and reviewing all the data from our instructional coaches this year and we're seeing, you know. When, when you have fifteen teachers that are asking for intense coaching and we, we don't have the time to do it. You know, it's kind of like Sophie's Choice. Do you give it to the first-year teacher or the veteran who's telling you they need help? So we're trying to work through those things.
Okay, okay, thank you. And my other, you said there was some co-teaching classrooms. How many co-teaching classrooms are there at each department?
So the majority of co-teaching is across um, English, math and science. Um, we do kind of focus there. We have um, started to do some co-teaching for EL students in social studies. Um, we, we, we kind of identify where there's a need. We do tend to focus on our um, core required courses. Um, so that, that's typically in those three departments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have you heard any feedback from like parents on like students who have uh, those coaches?
Um, so the, the parents don't really see the impact of the coaching, right? Really, the coaching are for teachers. They should see it with the increased instructional um, uh, acuity of the teachers in front of them. Um, I would thought you were going to ask me if I hear from parents about co-teaching. And I always tell the parents that I hear from say, co-teaching is the best kept secret. Because if their kid accidentally gets placed in there because there, there is a general ed class, they get the benefit of two teachers in a classroom. So we get, we get that, that I get a lot. Like, how can I get in that co-taught classroom? Luck of the draw. Yeah.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
You, you said the academic ROI. I'm curious, how is that measured? How are we measuring that?
So academic ROI is a process that we go through to determine what we want to look at. How we're going to gather data to evaluate what the goal is. We went through this process this year while looking at our PLCs. And what we determined was we decided to look at grade data as our baseline to see if our PLCs were um, giving us the bang for our buck.
And the PLCs are?
Our professional learning communities.
Okay.
So that's the teacher teams that meet weekly and then provide, you know, identify the students who need interventions. Or work on um, adjustments or changes to curriculum over time. Yep.
So grades, we're looking at.
We looked at, for this particular, you know, we looked at grades. Now, if we were looking at um, if we were looking at an intervention. That was um, specifically geared towards increasing test scores on the SAT. We would probably look at pre-test data and post-test data, right? Pre-test, then the intervention and then post-test data. Post.
Gotcha.
Gotcha.
We're with you.
Post-test data, got me, okay.
And, and the board, my remember, I believe it was in April that we did the presentation on the, the, that research project, the academic return on investment, right? Because ultimately what it decided is, uh, one, we had to declare what is success for, you know, it, it is. Uh, what we do on Wednesdays when collaborative teams meet is the most time-consuming and costly. Uh, investment that, that we have on a, on an ongoing basis. And we had to declare what is success with that. What do we want to see? Those teachers are meeting, they're looking at student work. What do we hope eventuates from that? What we hope eventuates from that is strong grades. Um, we felt that that was the right sort of outcome. Those individual teachers themselves, are they impacting SAT or ACT scores? No. Those teams aren't having a direct level, lever on that. Are those teams impacting tests in that science class, that English class? They are, but then it's hard to take a look at that from a whole system level. So we wanted to see what was happening systematically with, with grades. That's what we would like to see, you know, that improvement. And, and that, that performance. And just to recapitulate, what some of the veteran board members saw is. You know, we saw roughly, and I don't have that data right in front of me, we saw roughly that about uh, forty-five percent of our students would improve their grade. Um, from the twelfth week of the class to the eighteenth week of the class at the end. We saw that about another forty percent would maintain from the twelfth week to the eighteenth week. And it was our feeling that when you maintain a grade, you are doing something. But we saw about a, a percentage of ten to thirteen percent would have a decline. So the strategy that we put in place for next year are to address that decline. You know, that, that, that portion that, that, that our effort, our collaborative um, team effort is, is not reaching them. Good headline, you know, about eighty-five, eighty-seven percent of the students are growing, but we still have to address students who are not. Right? So that was with that initiative. And that came out of this five-year um, uh, strategic plan. It was a methodology that we used.
Right.
And you'll see a lot more. You'll see a lot more academic return uh, projects.
I don't, I don't know if you know the answers, but um, the English language learners? Um, they've grown over time, but do, do you happen to know, uh, is that in, pre-seen for this upcoming year?
So uh, EL learners, it's, it's difficult because they, they, it's the only group of kids that get assessed on a one-shot assessment deal, right? And so they come in, they take a screener, they get identified um, as having different language needs over areas. And then they take, they take a test in February and then we wait months to get those results. And we find out if they hit that, that, the almighty score of a four point eight or higher on this test, right? Um, and so it's always, you know, drives you crazy because the kids that, like, they get tired towards the end of the test and they're like, yeah, I'm not going to work on this. And then they're point two below and they don't meet the criteria to exit out of the program. Um, and it is a very difficult test. Um, and so um, you know, when we first started looking at the adjustments and changes that we needed to make to our EL programming. Um, we weren't getting kids to test out of EL programming. Um, and that has consistently been increasing. We have been having more students be able to test out of our EL. They're small numbers, but they're mighty, right? Like the, it's, it's telling us what we're doing is making the efforts and the changes that we need to. So like this time, we're looking at how can we leverage our resource, um, EL resource classes to work on some of the most difficult skills. Which is, you know, speaking and listening um, tend to be really difficult ones. And you think, well, that shouldn't be too hard. But it's, it is, it's really hard. And especially a lot of our EL learners um, are quiet. Because they, they don't like to use English or they're working on their English and they don't want to be everybody looking at them. So we're, we thought if we could look at our, that resource period where it's kind of a sheltered supportive class where nobody else is worrying about them. And really focus on those, those listening and, and speaking skills that we might be able to bring some of those kids up a little bit to. Get them over the, the finish line.
And just to go off of what Dr. Hunting, Huntington was talking about, it, the, the test is very nuanced. So like, I, when I was an access tested administrator at one point in time in my career. I would have to read something to students and go through a process with them and tell them to retell me that story. If they didn't say it exactly the way that they wanted it said, they weren't going to score out and, and, and exit. So there were a lot of students that were extremely intelligent, AP classes, things like that, but were so frustrated with the process that.
I'm just like, I'm done with this.
Yes, exactly.
So we do a lot of concourting.
And just to give a perspective, um, there are many of us who believe that the state's thresholds are highly restrictive. Actually work against students from progressing because of that level of, you know, idiosyncraticness. So we, we actually belong, we're new joiners to a consortium that is, is really deep, digging deep. To, to maybe tell a different um, performance story than this test that we're referring to right now called the access test. Right? It's our theory that, that, that English language learners are actually growing more than the access test might capture.
Right.
Because of the, one, the idiosyncratic nature of the questions. And then two, the significant delay that we get in their test results.
Right.
We oftentimes don't see their test results for months and we don't have an opportunity to address their scores. So stay tuned for that consortium.
Yes.
How often are ELL students put into classes with um, students who just speak English?
So we have a certain criteria that tells us what class a student with an EL uh, learner needs to be in. And so it depends on how long they've been in the country, um, what their current English skills are. Um, to get an EL co-taught class, right? So if they have higher skills, they're not going to be in a co-taught class. They're going to be fully embedded in the English language, the regular class. Um, if they have support, uh, language support needs, we have started to provide those services to those students in an EL co-taught class. So just like in special ed, we, we want them to be heterogeneous groupings. We want them to be the same curriculum as everybody else. But there are a certain number of seats allocated for multilingual learners and there are certain seats that are allocated for luck of the draw. Right? Any student that's taking that class. Same thing with special ed courses.
Gotcha. Do you think it would benefit if you put students um, who are learning English in classes just with, like. Ones who are struggling. ones who are struggling a little bit with students who know English?
They, they are. They are. Yeah. We don't have any sheltered
Okay.
EL classes currently outside of the heritage language learners class. So, those are, those are students that are only, that, that are learning English, right? So, there's a heritage one and a heritage two. That's one class out of the seven classes a day, right? That they are, are kind of sheltered. Every other class, they are in our general ed classes. And there's a lot of research and go back and forth about that immersion, right? But we also have a lot of English language learners that have been here since kindergarten and first grade and haven't been able to test out of the EL program because of this assessment that.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to see if.
So, it's not like all the kids.
Yeah.
It's not all the students that would speak English. A lot of them do. We, we have a small population of newcomers, right? Or under, have only been here for a year or less. We have a smaller population than that. Our bigger population are students who have been in EL programming for some time.
Gotcha.
Okay. Yep. Great questions. I didn't, I didn't hone up my EL skills before I came. Glad it's just all coming in. I could always hit up Dr. Shaw. I think she'd. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, principals report.
Thank you for having us. Just wanted to start off, I know last month I talked to our student board members and said thank you. But just want to thank you one more time for the contributions you've made, not only to our school board meetings, but to, you know, the advisory boards and the different committees that you guys have served on. It has been a pleasure and can't wait to see all the great things that you guys do in the future. Also, want to congratulate Dr. JJ, her first graduation. I know it was a stressful time. It was a lot of fun. But she has been phenomenal to work with all year. It has been a pleasure, and it was like that culminating event. She can take a, a breath for a minute, because the Tuesday after graduation, summer school started, driver's ed started, and Fresh Start started. So, as the freshman center principal, very excited. We have over three hundred upcoming freshmen come to Fresh Start. We had it for two weeks. We had it here at East Campus, but they were an amazing group, very energetic, and I would say by far the best group that knows our loyalty. So, when we sent off the softball team to the state tournament, all three hundred and twenty of them were out there singing the school fight song without index cards or anything. So, it was a beautiful sight, and they are all in their maroon wishing the girls well. You know, one of the, the questions that I love as an administrator, well, what do you do all summer? It's like, okay, all of this happened the Tuesday after graduation, and it has been hustle and bustle here at East Campus ever since. And our sports just concluded. So, it was a great run, seeing Coach Chivannik and the girls head downstate. It kind of brought back a lot of memories. In two thousand and four, which was the last year that I coached, was the last time we made it to the final four.
Did you wear your ring tonight?
I did not wear my ring, but I did downstate, put a lot of miles on my car that week between Illinois Wesleyan and Emporia, but I brought out my two thousand and four state championship ring, because that was the last time I coached. But just so incredibly proud of all of our kids and everything that they've done this year. I'm very excited to, you know, see the kids that are here this summer, the smiles on their faces, and we are gearing up and really getting ready for next year already.
Yeah. So, I want to echo what Dr. Green said before. Thank you to our student board members. We appreciate each and every one of you and your service that you've given to our school community. And also, we did have a lot of fun, you know, for, at the softball run this season. We're very proud of Ms. Chivannik and our girls who've gone, done some amazing things in softball. One of the things that was talked about earlier was the academic return on investment. And one of the things that came out of that was something that we started this year called Curriculum Palooza. And so, this was an opportunity for our teachers to get, to work with our collaborative teams, to work on curriculum and prepare for the next school year. You know, we kicked it off with a balloon arch, some music. We danced a little bit, and we cheered them on. And we gave them just a little presentation about what, you know, we hope to expect from them, from, you know, the work that they did. And we believe they had a lot of fun working on curriculum, which does not sound fun, but when you have some downtime, and it's not just about the grind of the school year, and you can take a breath as a teacher to just really plan and get creative and really focus on the next school year. We believe that it was a wonderful event, and we're excited to see, you know, for future years, what our teachers can build and create for our students. And finally, you know, again, just the graduation was something for me. It was really special, you know. So, you know, this class of two thousand and twenty-five is my first class as a principal. It's been an amazing year, and I just have to say thank you again to everyone, because, you know, we have a lot of, like Dr. Green said, we have some plans coming. I know that the students, you know, our incoming freshmen, they know that loyalty song. But we clearly are going to be competitive during homecoming, and so, there's got to be some work that our kids over here at East Campus.
You learned some dirty tricks first.
I learned some dirty tricks from Dr. Green. She literally prepared the kids for the assembly, and I did not. I did not realize that you have to make them practice before they compete against each other. I will do that. And make sure. We're all about porter pride. And what is, what is a porter, Carrie?
A winner.
Yes. And so, we want to just thank you. That's our report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, overnight field trips. As you can see, there are three there.
And oftentimes, you, you're probably saying, wow, these already happened. One is upcoming. We just always want the board. And then there are some all the way in the fall. We just want you to be aware of when porters are traveling. I'll jump right to the maintenance report. I don't know if there's any questions. You can see what this is. You got bittersweet? This is Bill Thompson's last maintenance report, you know? I think he's the William Shakespeare of maintenance reports. So, you can see, as I think Carrie Green said it well, there's a lot going on, and this is high season for grounds and maintenance and for custodians working very hard to get ready for the next year. Any, any questions about this maintenance report? Okay.
Okay. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items two through four?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Two through four, you said?
Thirteen, sorry. Eyes are not working right now. Okay, so that was motion by Luann Johnson and seconded by Ms. Straight.
Wendy Straight.
Any questions?
I have a question on the, the retaining the debt service fund interest earnings.
Okay.
Okay. So, it's my understanding that, that the money that's in there was earned on the bonds that we had, oops, twenty, no, nineteen ninety-four through twenty twenty-five. And so, what we're asking here is that we make them so that they can move somewhere else in the district's funds. And it would be my recommendation that since we've taken out new debt service, we leave these funds in a debt service account to be used towards paying off our next set of debts versus moving it out of there to use it for, you know, who knows what or where it's going to go.
Yeah, do you want to take that, Mrs. Corry? Just kind of? Uh, yeah, maybe. I think that'd be a good one. Yeah, I just, you know, if you don't mind borrowing a little money. What, what is this thing, this debt service?
Yeah. So, all this resolution does is provide flexibility. So, it just allows future boards to do whatever they need to with that money. So, it absolutely can be left there, and since I've been here, it has been left there. It has just sat there. Continue to earn more interest, and then if we need to make a payment, like, for example, instead of transferring money from the education fund to cover an abatement, the board could decide to use some of that interest money to do that instead. Does that make sense? So, like.
No, I, I completely understand what, what.
Yeah. So, I can just, this isn't saying to transfer it. It's just saying to leave it there.
It's to retain. You're basically saying you're going to retain.
Yeah. The opportunity.
Keep it where it is. And, and then it's really your choice if you want to transfer it, you want to use it in the way you were describing, Ms. Hayes.
Right.
But you're just saying you're going to retain that is, is what that.
You're going to keep it in the debt service.
Service fund. To be used as, as the board decides to be.
Correct.
So, you would have to vote on a, on a, on a specific transfer. So, this is just keeping it there.
Right.
Kind of basically to your point, you know, keeping it there to use it on, you know, there's specific uses. You can't just use it on anything, right? But you retain.
No, but if the board chose to transfer it later, that would be a separate resolution that says, okay, we have this interest in there that has been maintained as interest. Now, we can transfer it to the education fund, the operations maintenance fund, transportation fund, whatever the board deems necessary. But until that time, it just continues to do exactly what it's doing. Sit there.
Okay.
Okay?
I just want to make note that Ms. Johnson had to leave.
Yeah, I think, I kind of understand. I think where you're coming from, you just want to make sure that that doesn't happen willy-nilly. You know, the transfers, I think, is maybe what your concern is, is that it just doesn't happen at the discretion of a pen. There is a process of which we all have to make the decision to agree to decide to make that transfer. But I think it's important that we have this resolution to give the district the flexibility that it may or may not need, because otherwise, that money's locked down. And, you know, depending upon, you know, the uncertainty that's going on in the economy and the future, it's uncertain. I think it's just good business to go ahead and, and have that flexibility as a tool and knowing that there are safeguards and processes in place to offer the board and the community a sense of knowledge that that's just not going to happen without our approval.
And where you'll see fund transfers, any fund transfers have to be approved by the board. Those would appear in the treasurer's report. So, anytime we make a recommendation to move money from one fund to the other, you, you actually have to see and approve it.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, roll call.
Hayes?
Johnson?
Garrettson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes. Okay, action considerations. Do I have a motion to approve the copy paper bid?
I'll second that.
All right, that was motion by Candace Garrettson and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caneva. Any questions? Okay, roll.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Johnson? Shaw?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the food, food service menu for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year?
So moved. Second.
It was motion by Ms. Straight, seconded by Ms. O'Halloran. Any questions? Roll call.
Johnson? O'Halloran?
Yes.
Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the amended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
So moved. I'll second that.
Okay, it was motion by Ms. Garrettson and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caneva. Any questions? Roll call.
O'Halloran?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Garrettson?
Yes.
Johnson? Lopez Caneva?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes. Okay. Press one eighteen.
All right. Dr. Green is going to join me as well on this, and I am going to use my thin lesson plan, given that it's nine thirty on this. This is a very, very large issue, Title IX, and, and I was talking with, an email also from Ms. O'Halloran earlier. Looking for a little context. So, why don't you come on up and join us, Dr. Green, and to put together sort of a report of, of Title IX, specifically Title IX, not other grievances. What you will see is there were new regulations that came out from the Office of Civil Rights in two thousand and twenty. Those were revised in two thousand and twenty-four. If you take the past five years, what you'll see when we do that report, Dr. Green and I work on it, your, your bulk of Title IX sexual harassment claims will be in two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-five, really accelerated. School districts all over last year were working on Title IX. So much so that some school districts were considering hiring only a Title IX compliance officer. And all of a sudden, all over the place, people who were doing this as consultants just started popping up, right? And you might say, what, what, what changed? And I want to illustrate that to you, and we'll do it. I'll try to do it as quickly as I can on, on, on the slides and kind of give you a template of how we do, we do policy. We're here tonight because what happened was, there was, as you can see in the overview, there was a federal case that in essence deemed the Title IX two thousand and twenty-four guidelines is unconstitutional. And so, we have reverted back to two thousand and twenty. So, if you can follow this, we had to change all of our policies that mentioned Title IX anywhere in any of your policies to the two thousand and twenty-four guidelines. Now, you're changing them back to the two thousand and twenty guidelines. Just to show you with press, what we're doing here is, I thought, for every policy revision that you make, when a policy is changed, we have a service, press, they send us the policy, we take a look at it, we recommend if you adopt press, you maybe keep the policy as we've written it. You have to have a first reading, and you have, then you have to have a second reading. That's required. So, what I did is, because this is a really big packet, I've divided it into two. The Title IX revisions and then all the other topics that you can see right up there. So, you're going to deal with them separately, rather than a first reading all tonight. As I said, Title IX, we're going back to two thousand and twenty, because two thousand and twenty-four was, was thrown out in front of court, State of Tennessee versus Cardona. So, we've got to change our policies to match now current law. I want to, there is, there is, this slide is the slide that I want to stop on, because what we do is, rather than opening up each one of the policies and showing you all the line items where they're changed, we use these slides to give the board a general idea of what's being changed. Almost all the slides after these first two slides are really just aligning to these first two slides. So, with Dr. Green, and I want to, to dial in, obviously, we have to have a Title IX coordinator to do that. That's in, in compliance, uh, two thousand and twenty. But what has, has significantly changed? I think this is the language right here that is, is the most germane to what we're talking about. So, in essence, there's just one word that changes things significantly, and that's the word "and" or the word "or." So, in the two thousand and twenty-four guidelines, where you see unwelcome content determined by a reasonable person to be so severe pervasive and objectionally offensive. In two thousand and twenty-four, that word "and" was changed to "or." So, I want to just let that settle in. So, you could almost read that sentences. It could be a severe conduct or pervasive conduct or objectionally offensive conduct. So, in two thousand and twenty-four, the umbrella broadened out significantly. That is why last year, we spent quite a bit of time, anything that was any one of those, severe or pervasive or objectionally offensive, we had to investigate. Students and their parents could file complaints. The word "and," it creates a higher bar, right? In the two thousand and twenty guidelines, it has to be severe and pervasive, bless you, and objectionally offensive. It's got to hit all three of those, not just one of those. So, let me just pause. Dr. Green was doing quite a bit of Title IX investigating last year and this year, even in his role as principal. Does, is that, does that, I know it's just a single word, but it makes such a difference, right? Basically, the unconstitutionality of it was that this very broad two thousand and twenty-four definition was ruled unconstitutional. It has to be more narrow. So, we're going back to a narrowing that we saw in two thousand and twenty. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, as a result, anything you want to add, Dr. Green? I think you summarized it well, and I would just also include there are other two, there are two other parts under the Title IX umbrella, so to speak, that have not changed. District employee cannot offer any unwelcome sexual advance in exchange for a benefit. And then such um, such actions as stalking, um, sexual assault, dating violence and domestic violence. Those things are still under the title nine umbrella, where if those things happened, it does, it will fall under title nine. But what Dr. McBride just outlined in um, the, the second part, um, the unwelcome sexual advances. The, the change from or to and is a big change and that's really the major change that's occurring, if that makes sense. So now what we have to do is you have to go back and I'll go very quickly through these slides because we're required to. Now we have to align all the language on every single policy that mentions title nine. So, for example. Twenty twenty required not just a uniform grievance um, officer, you have to have a specific title nine officer. So we've got to, got to go back to that. We have to have a non-discrimination officer and a, a, a title nine officer specifically. This, we have to change this language in policy two colon uh, two six five. This is housed in how a person files a grievance in the district. Um, our equal employee and um, opportunity minority recruitment. We've got to separate, um, you know, the title nine coordinator from the non-discrimination coordinator. So we have to add that sentence in this policy as well. There will be a specific title nine coordinator that aligns with twenty twenty. Uh, workplace harassment, as Dr. Green said. Non-discrimination coordinator and title nine coordinator because workplace harassment, the kind that Dr. Green described, still falls under, under title nine. And these are standalone titles. This is this policy. Uh, staff development um, requires, you know, at least one staff member in each school. This would generally be your. Or your guidance director, be a resource for parents. We have stu-, if we had students who are parents or expected parents or victims of domestic abuse or sexual violence. That was in the twenty twenty, not in the twenty twenty-four. Seven ten, uh, equal educational opportunity. Again, we have to have a non-discrimination separate from title nine. In twenty twenty-four, could be a uniform grievance uh, complaint manager. Now you have to have, have these, go back to having these very specific standalone titles. Harassment, um, we have to add any student, um, uh, you know, harassment, you know, of a sexual nature. We have to add into that policy about harassment, specific title nine coordinator. Same with prevention of bullying and harassment. We have to add the phrase sexual harassment. Same with teen dating violence, as Dr. Green just mentioned, sex-based harassment, sexual harassment. Let me pause there. So it's threading through every single policy that touches on title nine to take it back to the twenty twenty uh, guidelines in language. And just for board members, you might say, well, that doesn't, I don't know if that seems like quite a few changes. We, you, you are required to vote even if one word in, in a policy changes, because then the policy's changed. And so we just want to make sure, you know, we bring that to you. So this is a first reading. You're not voting tonight. Just want to make sure, we'll do the work in kind of compiling the title nine cases that we had. Hopefully that'll give you an interesting tableau. With already the, the reversion back to twenty twenty. Title nine investigations and claims have gone down. Because it's, 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 it's not as. It's a higher bar to be a title nine claim in essence. So. That doesn't mean it's not something else, right? So we never want to give the impression that bullying, sexual harassment, you know, teen dating, that, that's not dealt with. It's dealt with through other mechanisms. Okay, thank you. That's just your first reading.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, announcements.
Announcements, super brief. Um, you know, it's summer. There's not a lot of events, right? You know, on the horizon, uh, you know. Thursday is Juneteenth, that's kind of a neat, you know, celebration. Uh, I do want to just make you mention one announcement. If you look. Kind of an interesting object I mentioned in graduation, uh, Kathy placed this, but we had nineteen sixty-five graduate George Starnisha, you know. June he graduated from Lockport, October he was fighting in Vietnam. Um, and he donated his, uh, this third um, case at the very top, that's his flak jacket that he fought in. That's his utility belt that he fought in and his helmet uh, that he actually fought in. Yeah, his shovel, his shovel is, his trench shovel is in there. And that's the helmet, the, the actual helmet that he was wearing. George will sometimes, when he talks to our students, gesture with his hand, which I don't think he means this, but his hand, most of his hand was blown off by a hand grenade. In combat, so. There's announcement. We've got, uh, also we do have your calendar. Um, uh, Dr. Shaw is looking at it. So, uh, you know, if there's anything you want to refer that I did mention because the hour's late, it's.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved. Second.
It was motion by Ms. O'Halloran and seconded by Ms. Garrettson. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting ended at nine forty-one.